Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
You're muted, Councilwoman.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Council President Matute Brown?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and we are at the start of our consent agenda, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Williams to please introduce. And Madam Moderator, can we bring over Dr. Johnson Diaz as a panelist? She's going to talk about Green Ribbon Week, but I'd like Councilwoman Williams, please introduce her.
Absolutely. Dr. Diaz, don't do anything to your screen. It's going to change over. One moment here. Okay, and I'm just sending the prompt. There you go. Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Hello, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Diaz, for joining us. Councilwoman Williams, can you do the introductions?
Absolutely, and with pleasure. Thank you, Council President, members of the Township Council, the West Orange community. I would like to bring forth not only Dr. Janice Johnson Diaz, who I consider a friend, but also a mentor, an advocate, an author, mother of the, the Marley Diaz, author as well, advocate, and she is going to speak to us about something that is near and dear to my heart, which is Green Ribbon Week, talking a bit about mental wellness in our West Orange community. So without any further ado, and not to steal any of her thunder, I introduce to you Dr. Janice Johnson Diaz, so that she can talk about mental wellness and Green Ribbon Week in the municipality of West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. I am so grateful to be able to talk to you today. I know I know most, I think I know every single member of the council, and you've heard from me in all kinds of different capacity, but this one is probably the most significant to me. So I think all of you know that I'm an Associate Professor of Sociology at John Jay College of Criminal Justice, but for the past two decades, I've been working on public health and public health-related issues, and I've had a great opportunity to be a grantee of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation for my own personal research, academic research, but I've also been supported by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and RWJ Barnabas, when they combined, to be able to lead our young people in public health research. And in 2017, RWJ Barnabas, with the help of Micheline Davis and Barry Ostrowski, allowed our girls to be able to embark on an internship where they had a chance to, to really learn from and shadow leaders all across the RWJF system. So they did an impovle policy, behavioral health services of all different sorts. And at the end of it, they had a capstone course where they had to talk to the foundation about what they saw was missing. And in that process, they discovered that in all the work that they had done over basically 100 hours, is that people were not talking about prevention enough, and they weren't talking about issues of prevention as it relates to youth. And those young people from that project came up with Green Ribbon Week. It isn't an idea that come from me. It really comes directly from young people who are between 10 and 15 years old, and many now are between 16 and 19 years old. And what they discovered was that with so much that is happening around health and well-being, is that we pay a lot of attention to crises, is that we are equipped to deal with things once they're broken, but there are very little efforts being made to deal with things in terms of sustaining their health and well-being. And they wanted to have a week devoted to really helping young people recognize that they need to pay, pay attention to their wellness, and they wanted that week to also be a week where adults begin to recognize that they could be more supportive of young people, especially in these transitional moments. And they chose September because September is such a big transition for young people. It's often when people are changing grades. It's often when they're going off to college. It's often when these big moments happen. So it's really, I'm here on behalf of those young people who found Green Ribbon Week four years ago. And RWJ Barnabas adopted this policy because it really struck them that preventative care is something that is not often discussed. So the evolution of Green Ribbon Week, I wanted you to know that history, and what it has really come towards now is a week devoted to listening and breathing. So having, asking adults to take the time to listen to young people without interruption. All of the social science evidence that tells us that when young people share their ideas with a caring adult, and it's uninterrupted, that opportunity allows young people to feel cared for. And many of us feel like we care for our young people all the time, but the concept of being cared for is really in the beholder's eye. So if young people share something with you and they feel like you're not listening, then really, they really cannot benefit from what you have said. The other concept is breathe in. We know that as young people, they are impulsive at times and are apt to take actions without great thought and experience. And so we ask in this week for young people to breathe and talk it out, and we're hoping on the other side that adults will listen. West Orange High School has adopted this policy for the past four years, and they've also won at the, at the state level, several awards for adopting Green Ribbon Week. So it is a five-day process, and we have a day of solidarity where we ask everyone to wear green. They chose green, and green is also grassroots colors because these girls were from it, but green really emphasizes the earth. And in that week, we also asked young people to spend a lot of time in nature. The research, our public health research, the scientific and psychological research tells us that when people spend at least 10 minutes outside, they actually have improved and preventative health. And so in the previous years before the pandemic, there would be a day where the young people at the high school would be outside, they would do yoga. We worked in collaboration with the Health and Fitness Department, so they would do yoga. The middle school, Edison, also adopted this policy, Roosevelt High School, et cetera, and several businesses, including TD Bank that we work for. Now I come to you to ask about having Green Ribbon Week really be our townwide policy. We know that the pandemic has really been quite challenging for all of us in several different ways, and we have to start thinking about ways in which we're going to be able to maintain our wellness, especially as we have new evolving variants. And we need to think not only about defensive strategies, but preventative strategies for all of us to be able to stay well, especially the young people in our town. We know that in this moment, that young people, especially those under 12, are going to be in a differential position from those who are able to take the vaccine, and we want to think about what we can do to make sure that they are well. And so Green Ribbon Week is our opportunity to say, look, there might be many things that are happening on your mind that we can actually pause, take a minute to listen, and also that we can teach young people that they need to tune into themselves and not wait until there is a crisis. So I am hoping that the town will consider adopting Green Ribbon Week as our philosophy in the second, the third week, September 20th to 24th of September, where all of us can come together and start to think about mental wellness, instead of waiting until there is a suicide, there's an attempted suicide, or some other action, that we can think about our wellness in the same way, our mental wellness, in the same way that we think about our physical health and well-being. So I hope you will consider this adoption, so that we can come together as a town and begin to see that this is this moment where we can prioritize our mental health, instead of waiting until there is a crisis. Thank you so much for listening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very, very much, Dr. Diaz. I think that that is certainly something that the township would be supportive of, and I would ask that Councilwoman Williams, since she asked you to join us today, could help coordinate that and make sure that that does happen. You said it was the third week of September, correct?
Yes, September 20th through 24th.
20th through the 24th. All right. So Councilwoman Williams, and I'll trust that you will follow up and make sure that we have a recognition in the coming weeks. Thank you very much. And, and I agree with you, Dr. Diaz, when you said breathe, I think all of us took a moment to breathe. It is so important to be reminded of mental health before it becomes a challenge to us all. So.
Yeah, I've been really pleased at the, the principles. So the way that they've done it at the schools is to take a minute each morning of that week where students, teachers, and everyone pause and just really become in tune with their breath before the day begins. That's been quite a powerful beginning of each day during that week, and I know that we all could benefit from that.
Absolutely. Thank you once again. I don't know if any of my council colleagues would like to thank, thank Dr. Diaz for being here. If you had any questions, follow-up comments, council colleagues?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't see everyone. We're in a different view.
I see Susan McCarthy.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Thank you. It was a mindful message, I think, as an educator for how many years now. Um, we, I feel guilty almost, because I'm going to say as an educator that I think we are, we try to be helpful by interrupting to let them know that we're listening. You know, yes, I hear you, but we don't stop and listen. So I felt that it was a very mindful message, because I do have to remind, I remind myself on a daily basis to let them speak first, so that we do take time to listen.
I will tell you, so we have a, on our website, we have a rollout method where we ask caregivers to sit for one minute while, so one of the things that we ask is to sit for one minute without interrupting and see what happens.
It's a challenge. It's a challenge. I, I hear you. It's a challenge. Because we want to be helpful, and you want to be there and let them know that you're there, and yet you're interrupting. I know. So thank you very much for the reminder.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino, I see you're off mute.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Diaz, for coming in today, and to Councilwoman Williams for taking the lead with this. So important in today's world, there's just so much stress between parents and especially now with the challenges of online, and are we going back to school, and, and our athletes, and, and there were stresses before the pandemic, you know, our high schools juniors and seniors trying to get into college, are, you know, just, just, I just, just a lot of stress going around. So thank you for addressing this. And yes, we all have to take a minute to breathe, because it really does work.
It really does. And it's so strange, because if you have an Apple Watch, when they ask you to do it for the minute, it feels so long, like you're just like, oh my God, I really need to just breathe. But it's so helpful for our brain and for our hearts. And so I was very surprised. I have to say to you, as an adult, when the kids came to me and they were like, you know, nobody's thinking about like, prevention. And I really thought like I was hip. I really, you know, like, I think of myself as vivid. And they were like, no, nothing we did was about like, preventing us. They're like, once you've cut yourself, or once you've attempted, there's all this stuff, but nobody thinks about like, what we should do to just like, daily maintain. They tell us to drink, eat fruits and vegetables, exercise, but they don't have a component, a companion on the mental health side. And so I've been really changed by these young people really calling us to task, to think about, just thinking about wellness as a daily practice.
That's great. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's nothing else, then we need to move on to our council liaison.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna send you back over. I just didn't want to interrupt while the president.
No problem.
Okay, hold on one second.
Thank you. And so that we can move on to council liaison reports. The only thing that I will share, as, as not a report, but just asking the community to please mark your calendars for the Human Relations Commission. In partnership with the North Jersey Women for Haiti, we are having a vigil at Town Hall on the 25th of August at 6:00 PM. It is a Haitian vigil and flag raising. Please do make sure that you mark your calendars, come out and support all of our residents. It's a very difficult time for the Haitian community. Our brothers and sisters are in great need. I would like for all of us to come out and show our support. Councilwoman Castellino?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman, Council President. So I like to start off, you're talking about stresses and just enjoying yourself. Last week, the Downtown Lions finally had a, a, their last Downtown Thursday at the Eagle Rock location. We were rained out twice, and we almost was rained out that night, and all went well. But I really want to give a shout out to Ms. Brill and to Emily Mans from EMI Strategies, our consultant we work with for the Downtown Thursdays. And a special thank you to one of our PRC commissioners, Patricia West. She was wonderful assisting us every week, and the other volunteers that came out, and Mr. Fagan. It just beautiful, beautiful events. The residents really enjoy them. The last event, we had some residents as jazz band, which was just delightful. So we appreciate all their efforts, and we look forward to next year tweaking it and enjoying it as well. And also to the farmer's market. They've been working hard every Saturday. They're still there through November. So if you haven't had a chance to frequent our farmer's market, please do so. I'll touch base later. Ms. Brill has also been busy. We've been working with the Downtown Alliance with our grant writer, and tonight I am thrilled that we have, as a resolution, we're moving forward to applying with our application for the Neighborhood Preservation Program grant, which will bring $125,000 award a year for five years. So a lot could be done. We're focusing on the Torrey Corner neighborhood. If any of my colleagues have any further questions when we get to that resolution, I'll be more than glad to answer them for you. Looking forward to next month, the Mayor's 5K run, our UK walk, is Monday, September 12th. Signups are on the Township website as well as downtownwo.com. We encourage you to sign up as soon as possible. This year, the run, the Downtown will be on its own. The Mayor's run will be sponsored by the Downtown, and we'll be making a donation to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry here in the Township, which with the pandemic not ending, we're, you know, we're trying to, you know, look forward towards a, hopefully not a long winter. So we hope all could participate. So again, leave that date open, Sunday, September 12th at 10:00 AM. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney?
Good evening and thank you. Council President, this, Dr. Diaz reminds me, am I still muted?
Yeah, no. No, you just muted yourself.
Right, okay. Listening to Dr. Diaz reminded me that we did have a request for Lynette Shear to come in at our next council meeting on September 17th. Lynette would be not singing, though that would be wonderful, but to represent the New Jersey State Mental Health Association to talk about the beginning of school for parents and children about the emotional backpack. That's the name of her presentation. So I'm hoping that we can put that on our next conference agenda.
Thank you.
I would ask everyone to visit the West Orange Arts Council. Para four exhibit is currently open, and the, for to pay tribute to 9/11 memorial, there is a creative writing tribute. You would have to visit westorangearts.org. It's a video you can put in a 30-second or minute, your comments or remarks for 9/11. And the exhibit itself is very powerful. I would also like to you to save the date, October 2nd, for the Friends of Thomas Edison National Stare Park. We continue to work on raising awareness and funds to support the renovation and repair work needed for the Black Mariah, what looks like a black tar paper structure right on Main Street. It's hard to believe that that is the first motion picture studio invented by Edison right here on our Main Street next to the Thomas Edison entrance. The community will be invited to this cocktail reception Saturday, October 2nd, right there on the premises. You can contact me for more information, or if you would like to participate. We do have Patsy Seafood. He provides our signature cocktail called the Electric Spark, and Nicholas Anthony provides, the family kitchen provides food, and whatever Nick decides, we know that it's going to be delicious. So please visit Friends of Tom Citizen National Stare Park Facebook page to find out more on that. And the West Orange Environmental Commission, we were scheduled to have a presentation last month at our meeting from New Jersey Clean Energy, from Geoscapes. We are still trying to talk about the feasibility of solar carpets on the municipal parking lot and the high school parking lots. New Jersey Clean Energy is in the process of changing the regulations, so that's kind of on hold. So what we will be hearing is a demonstration about electric charging stations. That will be on Wednesday, August 25th at 7:00. Will be a Zoom demonstration. And Planning Board met Wednesday, August 11. There were three applications. There was an existing Asia exhibit at Turtleback Zoo. They expanded the exhibit house itself for the Clouded Leopard and Red Panda. We also welcomed Dr. Klausner to Dr. Left, who we weren't really sure how many years he has been on Valley Road. Dr. Klausner and his team have taken over that site, so we welcomed him on Valley Road, and the renovations that he's doing there, very, very, I don't know, great, great for the, for Downtown. And the Montclair Golf Club was the other application that they are putting up netting around their pool for safety reasons. And left it?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. With the exception of the, well, pedestrian safety's last meeting was canceled. It will be held again on September 8th. Well, that's our next meeting. With the exception of joint meeting and Municipal Insurance Fund, I did not attend the other meeting that last month, which was open space. My daughter was competing in the Miss Teen Jersey contest, and my family planned a short vacation right after that. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to make that meeting, but I think for us tonight, that's good news, because my report is sure.
Thank you, and congratulations to your daughter's successes, and a happy belated birthday, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams?
It is Leo season. Thank you, Council President. The Rent Leveling Board did not meet in August. The next meeting will be held on September 3rd. The Historic Preservation Commission did meet at their, last month, their August 11th meeting, however, was canceled. But at the previous meeting, five properties that the commission reviewed for landmark designation was approved by the commission. Those properties include Holy Trinity Episcopal Church, located at 315 Main Street, Williams McManus Lehman House, located at 122 Main Street, Hedges Block, which is 56 Main Street, that's the hardware store, State Diner, located at 567 South Valley Road, and the George V Hecker Carriage House, located at 36 Ridge Road. Historical designation will then be sent to the Planning Board and then come before the Township Council for final approval. Lastly, but not least, in addition to just making sure mental wellness is a priority, I'd like to remind residents that the West Orange Run for Zack will be held on October 3rd at Rock Spring Golf Club. We are still accepting sponsorships. Race registration is open at $25 per person. That is a 5K walk run, and we hope that many of our residents and others will come to represent that run. In addition to the Run for Zack during Green Ribbon Week, we will also be designating a Serenity Bench at the high school in honor of Zack Maceder, who took his life in 2018, and that will be located in the senior lunch area. For those who may need just a moment to sit and just gather their thoughts, get a peaceful break, that bench will be located in that, at the high school, and again, in honor of Zack Maceder, and it will be called a Serenity Bench. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you. And even with the presentations, kudos to you, council colleagues. We are just in time, actually two minutes shy of our public meeting. So thank you very much for all of your cooperation in going through this very quickly. I'm very happy that we were able to listen to the very wise words of Dr. Diaz Johnson. Now I'm continuously reminding myself to breathe. Certainly appreciate that. Okay, we are at one minute before we open our public meeting.
Council President, I'll just fill in here, just to say that I was really pleased to see the grant in Downtown West Orange Alliance for the Neighborhood Preservation Program. That was, we were part of that years ago, which helped to mobilize the Valley community. Was a $500,000 grant at the time. We were awarded $1,000 a year, and the last year, it dried up, yet there was so, so much progress and activity and help within the community and the Valley and his 11th school. So I'm glad to see that funds are being reallocated there in that program.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
You're muted, Councilwoman.
I got you, Councilwoman. You're unmuted now.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I can't find my, my picture went away. I can't unmute. Thanks. Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Here.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Council President Matute Brown?
Here.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Yes, at this time, it is time for public comment. So if you would like to speak, you can use the raise your hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And we do not have any call-in, so we don't have to worry about that. We will ask you for your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. So first, we have Mr. Joe Fagan. If you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President, and your council colleagues, and members of the administration and public. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and thank you for this opportunity to briefly address the West Orange public this evening. Tonight, I don't have much in the form of announcements, but rather just a few brief reminders for our residents. Although we are still in August, I would like to point out the date of Sunday, October 10th. This is the next date for taking documents to the West Orange Environmental Center for Shredding. The hours will be from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Environmental Center located at 590 Mount Pleasant Avenue. I point this out now so residents can have some time to dig out their old financial documents, outdated credit card bills, or any other personal documents containing sensitive information. This is a free service for all town residents, and an ID is required. Please, no junk mail or plastic bags are accepted, and of course, all this information and details are posted on our website. Last night, there was a flag raising ceremony celebrating Indian independence on the steps of Town Hall. As Council President mentioned, there is a Haitian flag raising on August 25th at 6:00 PM. I also would like to urge all residents who can attend to do so, in a show of support for our Haitian brothers and sisters in the West Orange community, who need our support now more than ever. On Sunday, August 28th, the Rock Spring Golf Club will be hosting a West Orange Resident Golf Championship for men's, women's. for men's, women's, and senior divisions. So come and stake your claim for the championship title and awards. Complete information to register can also be found on our website. I would like to remind residents that they can sign up to receive important phone calls, email, and texts for issues and announcements occurring in West Orange with our Swift 911 program from the township website. Also, if you are interested in signing up for specific West Orange newsletters, you can visit the West Orange Community Sign-up Portal at W O sign up dot com. While visiting the township website, you can also scroll through the many upcoming events for a jam-packed September. Finally, I'm sure most people do not need a reminder, or maybe do not want a reminder, but we are fast approaching Labor Day, which signifies the official end of summer. So I urge all of our residents and anyone with this sound of my voice to fulfill all your summer dreams while there still are a few weeks left. Thank you, Madam President, to you and your colleagues for your focused attention, and have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brent Draper Scott. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This is Brent Draper Scott. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the West Orange African Heritage Organization. First, let me wish everyone a, I hope everyone's having a wonderful summer. And while we're in the throes of a new wave of COVID, I hope everyone is being safe. On Saturday, August 28th at 1:00 PM, the West Orange African Heritage Organization is inviting the public to participate in a Black Lives Matter peaceful demonstration. We will meet on Northfield at the Essex House, the old Essex House Restaurant. And we are going to be holding signs of Black Lives Matter from Gregory all the way to Pleasant Valley Way on Northfield. And again, that date is Saturday, August 28th at 1:00 PM. This is very important because we are on the cusp of making major change in this country. Many town councils and state legislatures and city councils and larger communities have changed the laws to reflect what we now know is going on in the country with policing. And unfortunately, the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act, HR 12, HR 1280, pardon me, 1280, is stalled in Congress. So it's very important for us to keep our foot on the pedal for change. For many years, I have heard and read that when gay and lesbian individuals, now LGBTQ, were fighting for their rights, they, they would say that if people knew that you were gay, they would have a different opinion or a different position. So they were encouraging people to come out. You know, what happens on television in that, in that George Floyd video is not the only thing. I'm going to share a story that I have not shared in 30 years. When I was a college freshman at the University of New Orleans, a friend and I were taking a walk down the street one night, a walk. And a policeman in an unmarked car jumped out of the car and put a pistol in my face, in my friend's face. And wanted to know where we were going, what we were doing. We were two college students who both lived on campus at Bendville Hall at the University of New Orleans, and we were taking a walk. And here was this police officer who stepped out for no reason and put a pistol in my face. And I'm telling you that because I want you to know that unfortunately, this is a horrific experience that too many African Americans have had to deal with. And so we need the George Floyd and Policing Act, HR 1280, passed in Congress. So we're inviting, the West Orange African Heritage Organization is inviting all elected officials in West Orange, members of this council, members of the Board of Education, members of the Democratic Committee, the Republican Committee, the mayor. We're inviting you to come out with us on Saturday, August 28th at 1:00 PM. We're gonna meet at Essex House on Northfield. And we're going to hold up signs for Black Lives Matter. And we hope that we'll get as much media coverage as we can because we have unfinished business in 2021. We have to finish this. We cannot let this moment pass us by. Again, that date is Saturday, August 28th at 1:00 PM on Northfield at Essex House. I hope that as many people listening tonight will join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Susan Lenzick. Lenzick, pardon. If you can follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Susan Lenzick, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. I am addressing a topic that was more extensively addressed at a meeting a few months ago. And that is the proposal to develop the property at 410 Main Street. The site is now occupied by a single-family home. But if the developers have their way, it will be occupied by a five-story mixed residential commercial building with inadequate parking built right into the plans. Others have spoken about the fact that this would irreparably change the character of the neighborhood and that it would cause pedestrian safety and traffic concerns, among other concerns. And these are undeniably true. The issues I would like to focus on now are parking and traffic safety. I lived on the Park Drive Loop for many years, so I know the issues firsthand, and I care about my neighbors and friends who still live there. The Park Drive Loop is occupied by a number of homes that have no driveways, and therefore, the residents must park in the street. Other homes have driveways that are not large enough to accommodate all the vehicles of the house occupants. And these include tenants in two-family homes or one-family homes converted to two-family homes. Those residents must park in the street. Also on Park Drive South are two four-unit apartment buildings, one with no parking lot and the other with a small driveway which cannot practically accommodate the vehicles of all the occupants. Furthermore, there's an apartment building across Main Street from Park Drive North with inadequate parking, as well as an apartment commercial building on the north corner of Park Drive North and Main Street, also with inadequate parking. I have observed residents of those buildings parking on the Park Drive Loop, and I don't blame them. Where else can they go? Unless you have lived in a situation such as this over time, you have no idea how much stress this lack of parking causes the residents in this area. Several years ago, I spoke before the council regarding the parking situation in the area. I even made a suggestion to help alleviate the issue for some of the residents. But the message I received was this, that's the way it is in these old neighborhoods, and there's nothing we can do about it. But it seems that the town is thinking of doing something about it. It is entertaining a proposal that would exacerbate an already untenable situation for the residents of this area. Why? Why does it appear that there's no concern on the part of the township for an issue that causes great stress for the citizens here? Regarding traffic safety, there are a few small businesses on the ground floor of the apartment building at the corner of Park Drive North and Main Street. Patrons often either double park or park near the bottom of Park Drive North. At times, drivers who park near the bottom of that street don't want to drive all the way around the one-way loop, so they back down into Main Street. If a car traveling south on Main Street needs to turn up Park Drive North, it is not possible for the driver to see that car that's backing down because the building is so close to the street. On more than one occasion, I had to slam on my brakes because of a car backing down into Main Street. I was lucky that a car on Main did not slam into the back of my car because of my need to stop short. With additional retail facilities in the proposed building, such incidents would be multiplied. Now, these are very practical, very real issues that the residents of this area have to deal with. So I'm really hoping that somebody in the township government is listening. I realize the township does not own the property at 410 Main Street. It is private. However, I ask that the township please be sensitive to the concerns of the citizens. I know there's a petition going around, and I don't believe anybody in that area supports the proposed, the proposed building. So please take all of our concerns into consideration when it is time to do so. The proposed building is not in any way appropriate for this location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joe Krokovic. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Trying to find my remarks, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I've gotten my name, so I need my remarks. Okay, I'm ready. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Joe Krokovic, Grandview Avenue. I was sorry to hear about the terrible interaction Mr. Scott had with the police and thank him for sharing that with us. Number one, I'm still waiting for answers to my questions from the previous council meeting spoken at public comment and emailed to the council. Why have I not gotten the answers, and when can I expect answers? Regarding downtown redevelopment, why the lack of transparency? You've obviously got something in mind. You've sent a notice of default to Prism. You've drafted a fourth redevelopment plan for the downtown fourth plan. You're proposing to borrow $13 million to buy properties that were there, and as far as I can remember, the town has never bought property on behalf of redevelopers. Do you even have the market appraisals for all of these properties, all of which have been identified in just the last two months? You're talking all these major steps, and yet you won't tell the public what's going on. What's the rationale for all this activity? Regarding downtown redevelopment, what's the hurry? You waited nearly four years of prison doing absolutely nothing to default them on phase two. We heard comments at previous council meetings that the $13 million bond ordinance wasn't going to be on the agenda anytime soon. Now, at the last minute, days after the agenda was originally posted without the bond ordinance, it's back. Why the hurry? Why won't you post the supplemental debt statements on the town website of recent borrowings, proposed borrowing, so the residents know exactly how much more debt you want to take on for these expenditures? If the council approves these pending borrowing requests and another 4.75 million for the Crestmont Forest purchase, that would mean our authorized and issued debt, just in less than the last three years, would increase by nearly $55 million, or nearly 70% to nearly $135 million. How are we planning to pay back all of that debt? Believe all of this recent borrowing would make the case against borrowing to acquire the phase two properties, which would also eliminate more than $500,000 of annual property taxes, even stronger. Separately on the agenda, please detail all the changes in the new Kemper Sports Management contract compared to the last one. It's hard for me to tell in the 183-page Exhibit A, but it appears we're paying them more this time and trying to dedicate some of the revenue to capital purchases and debt service on the $12 million borrowed to acquire the property. What are the plans for the $125,000 state grant for Torrey Corner? What's the nature of the dispute for the legal settlement proposed tonight of the lawsuit of the township versus John J. Arrezzi? Is he a former police officer for the town? Is the upper group paying the town anything under its long-term tax abatement for its Thompsons Street Apartments? Why or why not? How does making the entire town area in need of rehabilitation change what residents in the township can do with their property? What are the financial implications? Thanks in advance for your consideration and answers. I'm going to email these now to help. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Virginia Murchison. If you can please follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record. Virginia, if you can follow the prompt that's on your screen. And one more time, it's listed. Oh, hi, Virginia?
Yes.
Hi, if you could just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Virginia Murchison, 7 Park Drive West, West Orange. I agree with Susan. I'm very against the 410 development. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and this will be the final call before we get to Mr. Puglisi. If anyone has anything they would like to raise their hand to speak at public comment. Okay, thank you. We do have a few people. Again, if you would like to speak, you don't have to wait for anyone to stop talking. It will put you in a queue, and it helps us a little better to see how many people we have in line. So next, we have Clara Silvestri. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Clara Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I'd like to speak about the legislation on tonight's agenda about Edison redevelopment phase two. At the last council meeting, I expressed my concern with the council voting on first reading on a $13 million bond ordinance to acquire properties in the downtown redevelopment zone. I pointed out the public had been presented with no information on the recent defaulting of Prism, the original redeveloper, and new plans for phase two that the administration believed would require the township to take the unusual step of purchasing a lot of properties in the redevelopment zone, including those from the deficient redeveloper. My comments and those of other residents were met with a chorus of council members and the mayor, who made a special appearance, saying there would be plenty of time and opportunities for residents to get information, have their questions answered, and provide input into the process. Council President Matute Brown said that as had been done before during her tenure, there will be a workshop to discuss phase two plans. Council member Castellino said, quote, "The mayor takes his time. We take our time. If we need to have a dozen community meetings, if we need to speak to 100 residents one-on-one, we'll do that." But tonight, already, the council is being asked to approve on first reading a draft plan for phase two and the $13 million bond ordinance on second and final reading. I've waded through much of the draft plan, and it's pretty hard to get a concrete idea of what it all would look like without architectural drawings. But from what I've read, it appears the area will be very dense with a six-story high film studio set back 10 feet from the street, plus a number of three-story townhouses and a six-story multifamily building, an incredible 60 units per acre. It appears that the new proposal will actually have more, not less, residential units than the previous plan, plus this large warehouse-type building. This is a major shift from what was presented to residents four years ago, and I believe it should be further discussed with the public before the council moves forward to send it to the planning board. In the same regard, I question how you can approve a $13 million bond ordinance without the property appraisals? And which properties are we actually talking about acquiring? Please correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the township still own the DPW property, which after the old Barton Press parcel owned by Prism, is the largest parcel in the redevelopment zone? I believe this is an incredible amount of debt to be asking the taxpayers to take on without providing the kind of public information campaign that was done for Rock Spring Country Club. Please vote this ordinance down and give residents adequate opportunity to learn and weigh in. And also, I, I'd like to ask that now that the administration is asking taxpayers to pay up to $20,000 on an attorney to handle the closing of the purchase of the Crestmont Country Club property in Resolution 190-21, could the public please receive some information about what is transpiring there? Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Michaela Bennett. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. I'd like to ask the council, what exactly would it take to get you to investigate impropriety? How can you possibly expect the public to trust this administration's ability to lead honestly, manage competently, act in accord with their oaths of office if they cover up crime and don't hold their employees and agents accountable? When I learned of the impropriety at Ospac and its cover-up by the administration, I reported the crime to the county and state law enforcement because I learned that our mayor, our business administrator, who is an attorney and former law because I learned that our mayor, our business administrator, who is an attorney and former law enforcement, our police chief, and our township attorney didn't investigate. The crime didn't hold the criminals accountable. Rather, they covered it all up. But I reported to you that cover-up. I brought the crime of the township's public information officer to law enforcement for their investigation, and I reported the administration's cover-up to you, the council, the body that represents the people's interest. While the Essex County Prosecutor's Office Public Corruption Unit investigated the crime, you did nothing. Who advised you that you couldn't investigate the administration's cover-up of the theft that Susan Anderson was charged with? Was it the attorney who was copied on emails back in October and November of two thousand and eighteen? Why do you think that the administration knew about the alleged theft and discontinued its relationship with Anderson but didn't hold her accountable? No police investigation, no charges from the West Orange Police Department. In fact, the West Orange Police Department had knowledge of unlawful conduct and intentionally did not act. Don't you want to know why? Don't you want to know why the mayor, the business administrator, the police chief, and the township council are so invested in hiding what happened? What exactly does it take for this council to investigate impropriety? And while I'm asking you questions, why can't I receive a response after multiple emails requesting that you correct the record? What exactly would it take to get this council to correct the record? A year ago, as council president, Councilwoman Castellino announced that she'd spoken to the investigators and the investigation into Ospac was over and added that it was, quote, frivolous. Obviously, the Essex County Prosecutor's Office filed charges against Susan Anderson after investigating until long after last year when that statement was made. And the theft charge speaks for itself. Certainly, it was not frivolous. That statement by Councilwoman Castellino should be retracted and corrected. The council is obligated to correct the record. Why won't you? How do you expect the public to trust you and this administration with a thirteen million dollar acquisition here, a five million dollar acquisition there, when you refuse to hold accountable any questionable behavior? I've reported to you what happened to our family with the tax assessment. You refuse to investigate that. You believe what was written, written on a report that was written at the police department. Why on earth would a tax assessor need to go to the police department to write his report to all of you? Knowing what happened and correcting the record is absolutely your responsibility. Turning a blind eye to it all will be your history. The truth will come out. Who did what with whom? Who texted whom during meetings? Who appointed whom to commission? The truth will always come out. It always does. But you get to decide what side of history you'll be on. What exactly does it take to get you to act in our interest, the people's interest, those who elected you? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, it's just listed as Todd. So if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Todd Dubovy at Burnett Terrace. Couple of things I want to mention. First thing, small matter of the attorney that is slated to be employed to help the closing on the Crestmont Country Club. Looking at his bio on his own website, the last thing that he provides for his expertise is real estate. He starts off with matrimonial law and others. There are plenty of attorneys who do nothing but real estate, and it would seem to me that we would be well advised to be using an attorney who specializes in real estate. And if this is just for the closing, who was handling the transaction before that? And why the need to switch from the prior attorney? It's just a closing, it's pro forma, and there shouldn't be too much to it. And certainly twenty thousand dollars is far more than it would cost to do a closing. Second, referring to the downtown redevelopment and the thirteen million dollar bond offering. I'm baffled why this town feels the need to be buying up these properties and getting into the real estate business when we purchased the Rock Spring Country Club. And that sits with all of that debt that was used to purchase it, which was supposed to be nothing because parcels were to be sold and the Green Acres funding was supposed to pay for the rest of it. Nothing's happened. Just a lot of talk. And it seems to me that there is no guidance for you folks on the council. You're not returning to experts in the field of real estate. It seems like decisions are being made amongst yourselves without the benefit of expertise. And when you do get information or do turn to experts in the field, none of it's shared with us. And there's no information about this bond offering and what's the plan? What are you going to do when you buy it? And what's the exit strategy? None of that is laid out for us, and you're putting it to a final vote. That's absolutely ridiculous. And talk about lack of transparency. I'm not going to sit here and listen to a council person admonishing me about transparency when it's not there. It just isn't there. So I'm totally opposed to the bond offering. I'm opposed to the attorney that's being chosen to hire to close that transaction. And I think the council owes the taxpayers in this town a hell of a lot of more information than you've given us to be able to authorize anything. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And again, this is the final call for anyone who would like to speak on final comment, pardon, public comment. And we do have a call-in. So if you are calling and would like to speak, it is star nine on your phone. Okay, so seeing no one else, Mr. Puglisi, if you'd like to follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFancenzo. Hope everyone's having a good summer. I just have two things I want to bring up. One, of course, with COVID vaccines. The county has been offering vaccines since December twenty-six, twenty-twenty. To date, we've given approximately four hundred thousand doses. And I'm sure everyone's aware that on Friday, the CDC and the FDA gave approval for people with compromised immune systems to receive a booster shot of Moderna or Pfizer. Under the leadership of our county executive, we were ready the next day at both the Kmart in West Orange and Essex County College to give those booster shots. And within the first three days, being Saturday, Monday, and today, we've given about nine hundred doses of those booster shots. Also, the the vaccination centers at Kmart and Essex County College, which had been open just two days a week each, are now once again open six days a week from nine to five. The only day that were closed is on Sunday. Anyone who would like to get a booster shot and is eligible to get a booster shot needs to make an appointment on essexcovid.org. If you're going to the site for a first dose, second dose of COVID or of a Moderna or Pfizer or just the one dose of the J and J, you do not need an appointment. You can just walk in. And then just the other thing that I'd like to add is on September eleventh, which is a Saturday this year, we will be having our twentieth annual remembrance ceremony at the Eagle Rock Memorial. It is open to the public at this point. So we, anyone who would like to attend that has the ability to do that. I'll be here for any questions, and thank you for giving me the time of your meeting.
Thank you. And at that time, we have no other hands raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and thank you to all of those who are with us this evening and who provided public comments. Before we respond, I do need to remind my council colleagues and inform the public that due to pending litigation, I am asking my council colleagues not to address or discuss any issues pertaining to the downtown redevelopment. As I'm sure we would all like to have a response, it is not prudent for us to discuss any issues related to the downtown redevelopment at this time. Therefore, there will be no further responses, and none will be given to any other questions that were asked pertaining to the downtown redevelopment as we are in litigation at this time. And I hope that that is understandable to members of the public. We have received the lawsuit, and as a result, we cannot discuss anything further in that regard. I did want to thank Mr. Scott for coming on and advising of the BLM rally that is to happen, the demonstration that's to happen on the twenty-eighth of September. Thank you. Ms. Lencheck and Virginia, I completely understand your frustration and your advocacy. The council unfortunately does not have and cannot interfere with anything that may be pending before the zoning and or planning board as they are autonomous and quasi judicial bodies. So while I do understand the concern and share your concern, we unfortunately cannot respond in a way where you would perhaps like us to. I'm not sure, and maybe when Councilwoman McCartney responds, she can address that better as a member of the planning board. But we unfortunately, as council members, cannot engage in those discussions. And I just want to see if there's anything other than the Edison redevelopment, which I am not going to respond to. Once again, due to pending litigation. I know Mr. Krokovic had a few questions that pertain to the agenda items. We will discuss those at that time. Same with Ms. Silvestri. You had a question with resolution one ninety-two-one, which will be discussed when we are discussing resolutions. Mr. Devoni, you also had questions with respect to the attorney for Crestmont closing. We will have that discussion as a council when we approach that resolution. The downtown redevelopment, we cannot discuss due to pending litigation. You commented that Rock Spring sits there with all talk. I am glad that we are talking because that means that we are not entertaining the development that was initially proposed. The mayor has committed to, after September, to have meetings with the residents. So I think talking, or just talking, as you said, is a good thing. So I appreciate the conversations that we're having in that regard. Ms. Bennett, I responded to you in the past, and I still stand by my comments and statements. I don't think that the Essex County Prosecutor's Office is looking at an investigation in a silo. I'm pretty sure and confident that they are looking at the totality of the case. And if there were any improprieties on behalf of the administration that were committed, they would have certainly pursued those charges as well. I have seen to my satisfaction, when I have inquired, when I joined the council and having had conversations with the administration, with our chief of police and my council colleagues, that they did do their due diligence. And when it was time for them to refer the matter to the county prosecutor's office, that was done. Once again, I am not in a position to want to expend taxpayer dollars on retaining an independent attorney to do an investigation that at the end of the day, the county prosecutor's office is already looking at. So, and I also do want to say that everyone who is charged with a crime is presumed innocent until proven guilty. So that is my position. My council colleagues can respond as they so see fit. So, Councilwoman Castellino.
Thank you, Council President. And to stay on that topic with Ms. Bennett, you know, Ms. Bennett. To add to my colleagues' comments. The proper procedures were followed. The council does not do its own investigation. And we inquire and we ask questions. I have to go back and play the tape. Obviously, you did. I don't recall saying that I spoke with the investigators. I believe what I said was I called and asked some questions at the county. Never said I talked to any investigators. And what I was told that, because I was wondering where the investigation may be and could I find it, and why haven't we heard a result from such investigation? The answer I got from someone who answered me, who I'm going to keep confidential, basically said what usually happens is if a case is found frivolous, we'll never hear about it. So, you know, you took that comment and you adapted that to this, you know, to, I guess you interpreted that. I felt that your case was frivolous. I never said that. So we'll wait and see what happens. You know, people are innocent until proven guilty. So we'll see what happens. But all procedures were followed, and that's it. That's the end of it. I'm not going to comment about this anymore because that's all that was said, and we ask our questions, and we'll see what comes of this. In regards to the other comments, you know, we have to remain silent in certain matters. You know, being elective official for over sixteen years, that's the hardest part of the job because folks come on, they ask you questions. Of course, we ask questions. Of course, we do our due diligence. And when we could share information, we will, and we have. I think our track record has proven that we do have presentations, we do share information, and that's what we'll continue to do. So I appreciate your frustration. I absolutely appreciate it. By the same token, you know, we do share information and we do have private conversations when appropriate. And Susan, thank you for coming down and your neighbor, neighbor on Park Drive North. Again, frustrating, you know, the council's here. I know that plan had a lot of variances in it. So I can't imagine all the variances will be approved by the zoning board. But, you know, again, a property owner is entitled to develop their property, and they have to follow the guidelines. And that's why we have procedures. So, you know, when you see the notices, make sure that you attend those meetings. Mr. Fagan, thank you again. You had put in a lot of hours and a lot of heated hours, a lot of hot days. You were out there doing historic tours for our community. I believe this past weekend, you had a great turnout for Essex County Reservation. And thank you. I mean, it's so important to learn our history, to share our history for our beautiful township. And, you know, that's, there's so much history here. And because of all that history too, I think we're gonna, it's another gold star when I talk about us applying for the grant when we get to that. And last but not least, but thank you, everyone, for coming down and sharing your comments. Todd, I think, you know, we spoke in the past. I work for a title agency. I am licensed independent brokers. So I am well-versed. I sit in on many commercial closings and very experienced in the field. So again, we ask our questions, and when we can share, we will. So I do appreciate your frustration, and thank you for coming down. So I do appreciate your frustration, and thank you for coming down. And last but not least, Mr. Puglisi County, as usual, has always been wonderful. I can't believe it's 20 years since September 11th, watching the news the past 24 hours, just so many emotions going on, remembering that day, remembering my 30-year-old, and my 31-year-old, and my 24-year-old. They were just little ones then, and running around, getting them out of school, because we were afraid something terrible was going to actually happen here in the township that day. So many people coming from out of town just to go up to the reservation, just to see what was happening on that dreadful day. And I hope all of us could come together as a nation on September 11th to remember that day, and for our fallen heroes of that moment. So thank the county for always doing a lovely remembrance for us. Thank you, Council President.
I'm sorry, my screens are disappearing. Thank you, Councilwoman Catalina. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. I have a couple of thank yous. One for Joe Fagan. Thank you, Joe, for reminding us about the India flag raising ceremony yesterday. And I say that because Rhea Gold, who has been organizing that for the past four years with the organization, and a lovely turnout last night, is on her way to college. She has also been the student liaison for the West Orange Environmental Commission, most recently had a book published on Gen Z, had a signing at the library. So very talented student on her way to college, and is passing the baton for this ceremony on to her sister Sasha. So I'm glad Sasha has picked up the baton. And thank you for the announcement on the very popular Shred Day. So I have not seen that post. I will certainly share that on the Environmental Commission page and on social media. It is very, very popular. Thank you for that. And thank you to Brent Scott, too. So unfortunate to hear these experiences. We will move forward best we can, and thank you for the announcement on the Black Lives Matter. I wanted to just mention to Susan Lenchek and to Ms. Virginia Murchison that, according to the Downtown West Orange Alliance, there is, there has not been any mention of that 410 Main Street, and there is no application pending before the zoning board. It would be on the zoning board agenda, and there is no application pending. Ms. Bennett's comments also, I would not support a separate investigation. And as it has been mentioned numerous times, New Jersey Attorney General, the, I'm sorry, Essex County Prosecutor's Office is investigating the allegations that have been made. I wanted to thank Anthony Puglisi also for the county's continued vigilance with the COVID vaccines. Just thank you. And very stressful that it is still going on, and that the bond ordinance on second reading has been tabled, and we are looking for more information there as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to everyone that took time out to participate in public comment. I'll begin with Mr. Scott. I do appreciate the announcement of the Black Lives Matter demonstration. Just wanted to correct our council president. She said it was in September. It's in August, August 28th at 1:00 PM. That is a Saturday, and again, it's at Essex House. So thank you, Mr. Scott, and the West Orange African Heritage Organization for staying on the front lines of these issues. It is critical, especially in a diverse town like West Orange, that we continue to do the work that's necessary to move race relations forward. With regard to the 410 Main Street development, I don't really have much to say there. I've seen the same things you guys have seen out in cyberspace or on the internet. None of that has come before us in a formal manner. And so unless and until it does, there's really not much that I can say there. Mr. Kukoviac, I will continue to support your request for information. I know that you're still waiting for some answers, and you said that you would send an email with those questions again. Thank you for your persistence, and I will certainly be supportive in that effort. To Ms. Silvestri and all those that inquired about the downtown project, again, and reiterating what our council president said, because we are in active litigation, it is not prudent for us to speak any further on that project. And I'll have to leave it at that. Ms. Bennett, your call for an investigation, I have said this before, and I'll reiterate it here, had I been on the council when this first came out, I would have supported an investigation at that time. At that time, it was not known, at least from my understanding, if the Essex County Prosecutor or the state would take on the investigation. And so rather than wait and see, I would have supported an investigation at that time. However, since the county has taken on the investigation, and apparently is doing a pretty good job so far, that they have already announced at least one indictment, and I do recall reading that document, and it indicates that there may be others involved. If their investigation reveals additional, either elected officials or administrative officials that participated in this fiasco in any way, shape, or form, and they refuse to charge, then I certainly support an investigation. I think we would all deserve to know the fullness of what happened. But I'm confident that they will do a thorough job, and they will charge folks as appropriate. But again, if they don't, for any reason, and there is any inclination from their investigation that others were involved and have not been charged, then we will certainly revisit, or I will certainly revisit, the investigation. I take Mr. Dubovny's comments with regard to the attorney to heart. I think they were, with regard to the Crestmont closing, I think they were good comments and solid feedback. And so we will certainly take that under advisement as we move forward with that project. But that project is important for the township of West Orange. We are a green town, and this Crestmont purchase helps put our money where our mouth is and prove that we're committed to maintaining this canopy. To Mr. Fagan, who began the public comment, and Mr. Puglisi, who closed it, thank you both for your tireless efforts and your consistent presence in our council meetings. Your information continues to be prescient, relevant, and important for us. So thank you both. I think that closes my response to public comment. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. As always, I would like to thank each and every one of our residents for coming on this evening, taking time out of your busy schedule so that your voices may be heard. Mr. Fagan, thank you so much for giving us information on shredding day. I know that I have some things that will certainly make it to the occasion, and I hope that each and every one of our residents do likewise. Purging and getting rid of documents in an environmentally sound manner is always a plus. Mr. Scott, thank you again for informing us of the BLM rally that will be held at Essex House. I do recall attending one of those last year, and it is very important that we continue to support the movement so that we can bring attention and awareness to some of the improprieties in law enforcement. Mr. Dubovy, thank you again for your comments on Crestmont. Ms. Lenchek and Ms. Murchison, and I apologize, Murchison, if I'm pronouncing your names incorrectly. Again, appreciate your time to make the council aware of your frustrations. We are very aware that parking on the Main Street corridor is indeed a challenge. Please make sure that you do attend those meetings when they are scheduled, so your voices can continue to be heard. Mr. Puglisi, I certainly appreciate everything that the county and the county executive is continuing to do. I love the opportunity to do walking with the councilwoman at Turtleback Zoo on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Certainly am pleased that the county is continuing to keep the Kmart facility and Essex County College open for vaccinations. I personally had my shot at Kmart, and my daughter had hers at Essex County College. It is required, as she is approaching Boston Conservatory at Berkeley on Saturday, she is required to have her vaccine. Wanted to just ask the question, maybe, and I was, I did not hear the time, but on the Saturday, September 11th, 20th Annual Remembrance Ceremony at Eagle Rock, I did not hear what time that would be beginning, so maybe there were others in the public who missed that information as well. So if you could kindly just make us aware of the time for that remembrance, I would be greatly appreciative. Council President, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Madam Moderator, is Mr. Puglisi still?
Yes, he's unmuted now.
Oh, Anthony?
Yes, the 9/11 remembrance ceremony is Saturday, September 11th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Before we move on, I just, a couple of points as my council colleagues were speaking. One, I just want to be very clear. I know that Councilwoman McCartney said we tabled it. It has not been tabled, but I do want to explain why the matter is on the agenda after I did specifically say that it would not be. As a council president for the first time, and not really understanding how the ordinances are listed, when Madam Clerk advertised the ordinance for first reading, and then advertised the ordinance for sec, the hearing for second reading, she did that simultaneously in that day. I neglected to say to Madam Clerk, we're not going to list it. We should have, I should have made that communication to her, and I did not. So we are going to open the hearing, but we are going to suspend any votes when we, when that time comes, until a date where, in September, where we are able to hold the meeting. So it is not tabled. I don't want anyone to think that it is tabled, but when the time comes, we are going to ask that we carry over any actions that the council may need to take for a later time. So just wanted to clarify that. And also, because there is this constant, and it really does pain me, because it causes undue stress to those who are not fully informed of issues when it comes to their government. And we all have distrust of government. I mean, that's why I ran. However, I want to be very clear, because in all of the things that our former council colleague shares in public, I just happened to look back at an email that he was also copied in at the time. It was actually in response to an email dated June 18th, 2019, where Councilman, then Councilman Kukoviac accused the administration in social media of corruption. I just want to be very clear to say, and for those who will send an Oprah request, my apologies in advance to those who have to fulfill all of those Oprah requests simultaneously. This is the email from Mayor Parisi dated June 18th, 2019, at 4:29, referencing a social media post where he is being accused of corruption. The mayor himself asked our chief of police to please contact the proper authorities to investigate him and the administration for corruption. And I have an email here from Chief Abbott, which former Councilman Kukoviac was also copied on, where he did forward that concern and that complaint of administrative corruption to the Essex County Prosecutor, who confirmed receipt of that email. I say that to say, and I don't like to respond to what I will call half-truths, but the whole truth is that the reason I am not investigating is because this has already been asked to be investigated by the prosecutor's office. And that, like I said, isn't an email from the mayor to the chief, the chief to the county prosecutor's office, with a response from the county prosecutor's office. To the public in general, I want to say, yes, there are investigations, and we are seeking transparency. I want you to understand that we do ask questions. It's not a matter of turning a deaf ear and a blind eye. And I can say that, speaking personally for myself, that I have asked those questions, and I was satisfied that we received the responses that we needed to know that there was ongoing investigation. And when we talk about accountability, the former PIO was not, her contract was not renewed. That is accountability. So I just, I just needed to put that out into the space, because there is investigations that are ongoing. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to say, before we close public comment, that I wanted to lift up our Haitian brothers and sisters in prayer, due to the devastation and the earthquake that has occurred in Haiti. We know that we have a very vibrant and viable Haitian community in the township of West Orange, and I want our residents to know that we are keeping them in prayer, that we are here for them. And if there's anything we can do, certainly, to please make sure you attend the vigil that will be hosted by the Human Relations Commission, so that we can continue keeping our brothers and sisters in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. That is so very important. Thank you so much. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Let me just say thank you for the clarification.
You're very welcome.
Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, July 13th, 2021?
Consent.
Consent. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent. Resolutions, Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Yes, I, the first three, so it's item A, B, and C, and the resolutions awarding contracts for providing recreational services and athletic services to the residents of West Orange for both the PAL, as well as the Mountain Top League and the Community House. And I just want to just make the statement that the reason why these are being held over is because the council has asked, as required by our agreements, that financial statements be provided, and we have not received those. And I know Councilwoman Catalina, during the last council meeting, asked for those to be provided, and due to a breakdown in communication, we have not received those. So we are holding those over. Once again, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. And I don't have any items that I am pulling off of the agenda. Do any of my council colleagues have questions that they want to pose? Councilwoman Catalina?
Okay, so just maybe 190-21, can Mr. Trank just go over, the fee for the attorney is up to $20,000. So that doesn't mean we're spending $20,000 on an attorney for the Crestmont Country Club transaction, but if Mr. Trank could just explain what's entailed with that, being that, remember, the public had asked that question. So I believe it's for work with the contract, the, obviously, the closing fee wouldn't be that much, but there's other due diligence that I assume is being done. Correct, Mr. Trank?
Yes, Council President, can I respond?
Please, please, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilwoman Catalina, and thank you, especially Councilman Rutherford, who's been an active partner in this. So there are, again, the public, the administration, and the council have all been united in pursuing this transaction. This obviously involves 95 acres of land adjacent to Crestmont, which is now part of Crestmont, that different developers had made proposals. And what the administration, with the support of the council, and with Councilman Rutherford as liaison, have tried to negotiate is a final have tried to negotiate is a final purchase price for that. Um, we're going to discuss in executive session, so the council has to understand the exact increments of it. But as um, uh, Councilwoman Castellino is indicating, uh, this transaction involves several parts. It involves, number one, our due diligence on environmental. Uh, we ordered, this council approved a phase one by Matrix Environmental. It came in and just before I left my office, I printed it out and it is over nine hundred pages, the phase one. Because obviously, no one buys raw land in New Jersey without making sure uh, that um, it is uh, clean, so to speak. So this involves environmental, number one. Number two, involves a number of years of tax appeals that are currently pending. Uh, and we've had a number of discussions about those tax appeals and what uh, our potential exposure is. Uh, and uh, those, that resolution, because we're not going to buy the land unless we resolve these tax appeals. That is obviously, we're not going to pay money and then have people um, litigating with us. So that is part of this. And the third part is obviously the transaction, which also involves um, as we have learned, that there is actually a T-box on part of the ninety-five acres. So there, and, and there are also always issues about active and passive potential recreation in the future, about buffers, about dirt roads. So again, uh, Councilwoman Castellino could not be more accurate that it involves a number of moving targets. Uh, before I left my office at six thirty tonight, I looked at the latest version of the contract. It still needs council approval and will be fully presented, I hope, at the September meeting. Uh, but that's why the decision was made by the law department that uh, rather than just, and, and um, that I, I basically uh, thought it was appropriate. But uh, it's a two hundred dollar an hour rate, which is far below the market. And yes, the only reason that twenty thousand is in there is as a cap because the Chief Financial Officer has to certify as the potential availability of funds. Keep in mind, um, before this can be approved or before it can be consummated, there will be a bond issue that will obviously come for two readings before the council. And, and the public will have a, a absolute right to be heard uh, on that issue as well as the uh, final contract. So we um, have been moving all summer to get this done. Uh, the uh, Board of Trustees for uh, Crestmont had to approve their end of the transaction. And now we're finalizing the due diligence. And that's why the law department had uh, requested that the council consider this expenditure of up to twenty thousand. We're obviously hopeful it'll be far less, but uh, there are a number of uh, facets of this transaction, which I think as uh, Councilman Rutherford said, involves, you know, preserving a substantial and probably one of the largest remaining tracts of land that we can potentially uh, preserve for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. I, I have other questions, but I'm not sure, Council, uh, Council President, if I see, I count my colleagues' hands up if it's for this question.
Uh, is it for this question? Yes. The Councilmember Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Castellino. Um, I have, sorry, I'm, uh, my technology looked a little, I don't know if you still see me?
Yes.
For some reason, I lost us for a second. Um, I have every confidence in the administration thus far and everyone that has participated in pursuing the purchase of Crestmont. I think uh, they've done a phenomenal job. Um, so I'm not questioning uh, Mr. Gengaro if I'm saying his name right. But I, my question is, how do we select that attorney? And I'm assuming it's from a list of approved attorneys. And on that list, do we have attorneys that are people of color? Um, do we have firms that are run by women uh, and people of color on that, on that list as well? And how do we make sure that we are fairly considering them when these opportunities for work come up? If you could speak to that uh, for me, Mr. Trank, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Definitely. And um, the Council President, um, and I have spoken that a number of times and it led me to actually write to the presidents of all uh, the Minority Bar Associations earlier this year and ask them uh, to uh, make available uh, that our desire to have as open a field of counsel as possible. So to, to answer you directly, we put out an RFP, generally it's in December. Uh, we accept uh, whatever uh, resumes or uh, requests for qualifications come in. We have a number of firms. Um, we do select from those firms uh, based upon the particular need at the time uh, and based upon our, our knowledge of their expertise. But specifically, I, I do want to, since you've given me this opportunity, uh, make clear that we have been searching diligently without success for a new public advocate. Uh, and we have specifically been uh, asking uh, for persons of color or women or, and especially the mayor, obviously always likes to give a preference to uh, people who live and work in town. So we would welcome, as soon as tomorrow morning, uh, any inquiries. And I've asked our boards uh, to uh, make recommendations. And I know um, Chairperson Neuer and Chairperson Bagloff have been actively seeking also. So uh, again, the short answer is, we can always do better. Uh, and if we are open, I, and we are doing everything we can on every level to have as inclusive a representation uh, as possible within the uh, legal services to this town. So I appreciate it and you should continue to hold us accountable on that uh, on, on all fronts.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman um, Castellino, if you had further questions?
Oops, trouble with that tonight. Sorry about that. Uh, yes, yes, Council President, I'll go to the grant in a second. I'm just batting an order. Uh, um, uh, number one ninety and ninety S twenty-one where um, Kemper, the um, the contract of renewal for Kemper or um, that are managed is our Rock Spring Golf Club. They have done an excellent job and I, I know we've been pleased with them. And the, my question is, and the way we did the agreement for them for subcontracting out to the hospitality vendor, which was also doing a nice job for us. Um, I was under the impression, until I talked to Mr. Gross um, the other day, that um, I, I was wondering how we could track the progress of the restaurant. I know they're a subcontractor for Kemper. And my question was first, will we be approving them yearly? Will they just automatically fall into approval with this contract? Um, so I guess, Mr. Trank, you can answer those questions. Um, so that's about it. I, I'm happy with our services. I just want to know how we could track the progress of the new restaurant.
So, um, so I do want to uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman and uh, Council President, if I can respond briefly. And uh, Miss, Mr. Moon sent around a, a short email that summarized, um, again, uh, on behalf of the administration, I cannot, uh, in all of the aspects of government, you know, you talk about accountability and financial statements and transparency. Again, Kemper uh, Sports Management has provided that from day one. And I do believe, and I, I do believe that uh, the moderator provided links uh, to uh, Chris Parker, uh, the General Manager of the Year, who's been managing the course, who's on this call and can answer any questions or speak for himself. Uh, Mr. Cheshire, uh, John Cheshire is the Regional Manager for Kemper for this entire uh, area of Pennsylvania and New Jersey. And Ben Blake, Ben Blake, uh, who is a, a Senior Vice President, who's appeared before this council in the past and, and been available nonstop from the beginning of this relationship. So the most important thing I want to point out is, we've increased um, the percent that the town will get. What, what you will recall, when we did the first round, because we had no idea how well we do or not, the, the administration's, the mayor's main perspective is, he didn't want this to be uh, like a farm where we would have to be every day uh, in, investing more and more and more. So we basically made it, uh, so we gave uh, everyone the maximum incentive. And, but we got a five percent uh, management fee off the top. Now we're getting a seven and a half percent uh, in this contract. So right out of the box, uh, and again, if there's one entity that provides monthly federal express checks and financial statements that we've made available to the council and will continue uh, is Kemper. So to go to the restaurant, that, that's been the biggest challenge of everything. Because obviously, the great thing about Kemper is, you know, everything's done on apps. You know, if, if the mayor or the, the police chief is on this call, the Director of Operations, Mr. Abbott, if we get one email, you know, within literally ten minutes, Mr. Parker's on it uh, and responded. And, and as, as, you know, there, there are issues, like in any service uh, industry, but Kemper has been uh, more responsive than, you know, I would say any other vendor probably in town. So the restaurant's been a major challenge. Uh, obviously, the current operator that you did approve, it's only approved through the end of this year. So directly to answer your question, Councilwoman, um, if there's going to be a, uh, whether this vendor is considered for renewal or a new vendor, or whatever the future will hold, uh, it'll be a subcontract and it'll come back before this council for approval. Having said that, we've always seen this as kind of an amenity uh, and a service for the community and hopefully for people to participate. We all know the labor issues that exist in every service business in this country. And, and certainly, uh, I think it's called the Rock, is, is no um, exception. But, so again, we continue to have accountability, I would say, first and foremost, because the people that Kemper have there uh, have been second to none in terms of being responsive. Uh, but we do have contractual rights. Uh, and again, what Mr. Gross spent tremendous amount of time in is addressing issues of capital improvements. I will tell you that, that our, our goal, and, and I'm working with Mr. Cronine, I'm on this, um, and hope to have something back for you. We still believe that uh, spending certain monies on the bunkers and on the card pass. The card pass in particular are, are important because if we had better card paths surrounding the holes, then when we have bad weather events, we can get the course back up and running. Because when you have weather events and you don't have hard pass, you can't let cards out the next day uh, because, you know, they'll sink and, and you'll risk a lot of different issues. So um, but, but, but finishing the card pass i- is a capital improvement. Any capital improvement that will have a life of over five years is on our dime because again, they won't be able to advertise it into their operation. Uh, and uh, again, uh, subject to whatever the council, how the Council President or the council people, I would, you know, I would ask uh, Council President to let either uh, Mr. Parker or Mr. Cheshire or Mr. Blake to make any comments they wish on their uh, history and uh, what they see to come in the next five years.
Sure, I certainly um, would like that. Uh, my moderator, if you can bring them on as panelists. Um, if um, Mr. Blake or John Cheshire and, is Chris Parker, if he's also on. Um, if you can bring them over, that would be great. Um, and as we wait for them to come over as panelists, I just want to also um, indicate that in addition to the seven point five percent um, of the, uh, of the fee to the township, there is also three percent of the remaining gross revenues that will be deposited into the capital um, improvement account as well. So I, I know that there was a public comment that said, that, that um, indicated that we were actually um, negotiating less in this contract. That's simply not, not the case whatsoever. Um, and also, I would like to say that um, the debt service to the township is um, also included. Um, as well as a fifty fifty split um, for the remaining gross revenues from Kemper. So I think that the, um, and, and kudos to our legal department and our administration for um, working on a contract that really benefits the residents as well as Kemper. Um, so, um...
I'm sorry, if we could just have the other, um, the attendees just raise their hands so I can just pluck you out of, thank you so much.
Um, and, and Mr. Blake, if he's here still as well. Wonderful, thank you.
I have Mr. Parker and Mr. Blake coming over.
Yes, uh, Mr. Gross.
While, while we're waiting for that to finish up, I just want to focus a little bit more uh, on, on the additions that we've added in terms of putting together a sinking fund of three percent to pay for day-to-day capital expenses uh, from the operation. As well as, uh, which was a major shift for us uh, in, in this contract, to add in the, the, the debt service component. What that does is it means is it that for the next five years in this contract and then and, and any follow-up contracts, whether they be with Kemper or another agency, uh, we're going to continue to be able to pay down our debt service from the project itself uh, and not have to add additional taxpayer dollar funds uh, into the process as long as the project remains profitable and we, and we certainly have no reason to believe otherwise. So this is going to, this is a, a huge shift for us uh, and, 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 and one that I think is um, going to be a very important uh, for us moving forward.
Thank you. I uh, one hundred percent agree with that, that statement. Uh, Mr. Gross, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Cheshire, Mr. Parker, Mr. Blake, uh, floor is yours.
Well, thank you. It's uh, it's been a, uh, an interesting ride, needless to say, and a, and a great ride. I think we all forget, it wasn't too long ago when uh, the golf course of the country club was closed and, and uh, was purchased and we started on this journey. And it's been uh, it's been very rewarding, I think, for everybody. Uh, we are now looking forward to the next phase, the next phase, as Mr. Trank says. And uh, Mr. Gross is getting the capital improvements done to this property. Uh, that will largely be funded uh, partially through the property and partially um, through other ways. But uh, now's the time to invest back into the property and uh, continue to make sure that it's one of the finest uh, public golf courses in the state of New Jersey and, and continues to uh, be a treasure. And so Kemper Sports is very excited to be part of that. We appreciate everybody's support. And um, you know, we'll continue to give a hundred and ten percent to make sure that it's a successful project.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. John or Christopher, if you'd like to share.
Yeah, sure. Thank you all for allowing us to just be a part of this and be on. It's been like, much like Ben said, it's been a great ride so far. It's been challenging and exciting at the same time, and we're happy to be here and be a part of this. Um, I will address um, Councilwoman Castellino's questions about performance. Um, you know, like anything else, it's been a challenge if you've been in hospitality right now. But I think uh, you know, we're working through some of the issues with staffing and, you know, hours of operations and just making sure, sure the standards are consistent as far as, you know, food consistency and things of that nature. But um, you know, overall, they're doing a, a pretty good job. We're just, the communication, line of communication is open. We're talking through a lot of things and starting to see some improvement on the consistency.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Um, John?
Yes, and I'll, I'll further add that uh, as uh, Mr. Trank had, had communicated, uh, our agreement with Restaurant Group is only through the end of this year. Uh, we work very hard to continue to um, communicate openly uh, with Mr. Trank and, and the mayor to, to make sure that the direction we're taking the club is the, is the direction the township would like to see. And so our continued relationship with that, with them will be based on their continued performance through the remainder of this year.
Um, Council President, I just want to wrap up on one point. Uh, within the last month or so, or two months, uh, the mayor and I met with the Chairman of Kemper, uh, Mr. Wesnick, who was in town. And, and we reinforced that we hope uh, that if the council approves a new contract, that will continue, the Kemper and, and the Rock Spring will continue to cement the relationships through the high school. We think getting young people uh, actively involved, getting them there, uh, giving them an opportunity to learn about golf and, and to get excited and to have an opportunity to see this spectacular uh, property is key. And I know Kemper on a corporate level does that. And I believe that Mr. Parker and Mr. Cheshire on a local level have, have reached out to uh, the principal of the high school and are committed uh, to more of those leads, more of those opportunities, to not make finances be a barrier on any level. Uh, and, and I think that is what will cement this um, as really an integral part of this community. So I, I know Mr. Wesnick, the chairman, was committed to it and I know he was going to communicate that through the ranks. And, and we really want to see that happen uh, with our golf teams and, and any young people through any of the uh, secondary or other schools in this uh, region. So that's one of the things the mayor is going to be looking for accountability on, on a, a regular basis.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Trank and uh, Mr. Blake, Mr. Parker, and Mr. Cheshire. I don't know, uh, Councilwoman Castellino, did you have any additional um, comments or concerns that you wanted to share on this resolution?
Ju- just real quick, a comment to Mr. Trank's point. I was uh, up there about uh, two weeks ago to have dinner and watching one of your clinics for the young athletes. So that was great. So that was great to watch and having a son who played on the high school golf team. It, it's great to, to see your involvement with the community. And thank you, gentlemen. Like I say, everyone's been doing a great job up there, just, and I appreciate your reports. I was just, you know, trying to track the progress of, of hospitality as well. Because it has been a rough year and to see how we can move forward with that. So I look forward to a conversation by the end of the year. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. I, I will also echo those sentiments. I know that the, the hard work that the hospitality group has dedicated and, and the investment that they have made in Rock Spring is, is quite tremendous for our township. I know I am a frequenter of The Rock Spring as if I'm going to pay off the bond myself. Since my yes vote was the yes vote that bought it. But I, I would, I, I would, you know, like to see the continued solidification of Kemper Sports and the hospitality group grow and help improve the outcome of, of business and revenue, obviously, to the township as well. So in December, we should revisit that, that contract as well. One of the things I did want to say to my council colleagues is that we, when we entered and when we purchased Rock Spring, we did also contract with a compliance officer, which is David Cronheim. I'm sure you all remember him as well. And in reading the contract for Kemper, I do note that, you know, he, as a compliance officer, oversees the, the management of Kemper and reports back to us. So perhaps opening the lines of communication with Mr. Cronheim as it pertains to the hospitality group would help us have better understanding of how, how they're performing. I think that's what you were looking for, Councilwoman Castellino, right to, yes. And I feel, I feel comfortable with that as well. I don't have any other questions with respect to Kemper's contract. I will say it was quite lengthy and I appreciate our legal department giving us a breakdown and helping us digest the entirety of that agreement. But I was happy to, to read it and happy that, and look forward to our continued partnership with Kemper. Very happy with the progress thus far. Do any of my council colleagues, oh, Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you very much. I wanted to say thank you, gentlemen, for your commitment to this historical gem that we have in town and continued success there. I wanted to also say thank you to Richard about, and the mayor for encouraging the partnership with the high school. The high school has numerous business programs, entrepreneur programs and career and technical programs and very talented students. So I would encourage that relationship as well. Going back to the original question about the restaurant, the way we receive a summary statement and income statement on, for that, would it be possible to get a breakdown, a summary statement on the restaurant as well before the end of the year?
The way Councilwoman, Councilwoman is structured is, keep in mind, we, we basically gave up in order to have that amenity there and give them the shot. To Kemper's credit, they gave up money because, because obviously the operators need to make money. So really, literally, all we'll get on the Kemper statement is the percentage of that they get. So obviously, that doesn't stop us from communicating with and doing like the council president indicated to get Mr. Cronheim to interface with them. I, I obviously think, and I think Mr. Parker probably said it correctly. You know, they've had challenges and there is a consistency issue. So I, I think it's a work in progress. And I think the, we'll, we'll definitely, as we get into the fall or, or late fall, there's going to be a lot of discussions that'll occur. And hopefully, some of the, we'll call it learning curve will be. But I, we don't get the level of granular, again, Mr. Parker and the Kemper staff, because the way they're set up, they give us the best reports that you've seen about every, you know, ounce of dollars that come in and out. We don't have that structured in that manner from the restaurant. Because again, there was tremendous amount of startup. They spent, as everybody who's been up there saw, they spent a lot of money in, in a lot of what I'll call improvements that were definitely needed that frankly, the town wasn't willing to lay out that money. And, and so it's to their credit. But, but again, it will, the good thing is we're in constant dialogue with everyone. And again, nobody could be a better on-the-ground person than Chris Parker. So we'll, we'll try to get you much more information as we see how they come out. I do want to remind you, we put in an RFP on that restaurant. And, and, and the mayor and I met with very talented restaurateurs. And before we were successful to get the current operation, no one was willing to bid on that RFP. So it's a challenge. So hopefully, this group will be successful and we'll be able to learn a lot from it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of my other council colleagues have questions for Mr. Blake, Mr. Parker or Cheshire comments concerning the resolution? No, I'm not seeing any hands. Gentlemen, thank you for your time and for all of the work and your commitment to our township. Very excited about our continued partnership.
Thank you very much.
Take care now.
Thank you.
I'll be promoting them back to attending now.
Okay, thank you. And while you're doing that, council colleagues, I'm sorry, I, there were two other items that I needed to have pulled. Madam Clerk, it's item 215. And, which is the adoption of the budget. We will discuss that at that time as well as 213. So we'll, we'll discuss that when we get to those items.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And also, before we move further, I know that there was a question, someone asked a question about Resolution 189 with respect to a settlement in the matter of the Township versus the Resi. This, as I understand, is, was a matter of a retiree who... Okay, I'm sorry, here's my notes. A retiree who was divorced and we did not receive the divorce decree in order to be able to remove the ex-spouse from the benefits. And so the township pursued litigation in that matter to recoup some of the funds that were expended during that time for that ex-spouse that have to, have had remained on to, on the benefits plan. So I just, before we move on, I wanted to make sure that I, I pointed that out. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. I had a couple of questions. I'm just looking through my notes now. Wanted on Resolution 202-21. Just wanted to confirm that the discrepancy is, it's a $3,500 cost. In one point, it said $35,000, but then in the actual service agreement, it said $3,500. So just wanted to confirm that the $3,500 is correct.
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And then I think Councilwoman Castellino indicated that on 203-21, the grant for the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Neighborhood Preservation Program and the amount of $125,000. If I'm not mistaken, she said that we were going to discuss those improvements. But I just wanted to make sure that's pulled for discussion.
Okay, so you're, you want to pull 203 or do you just want to have it discussed? We can discuss it if it's just a matter of discussion.
Well, I would like to know what the improvements are. So if Councilwoman Castellino can speak to that. I think she said she had additional information. Doesn't have to be pulled. I, I just wanted to know, do we have an idea of what those improvements are? So discussion is fine.
Yeah, Councilwoman Castellino, please.
Okay, so, so yes, I said I would discuss further with detail. So we don't have improvements yet. So this is a, a full process. And the way the process begins is we're just applying for the grant right now. We had the, the state representative come in for the grant to walk with myself, Ms. Brill, and actually our park ranger, Mr. Thomas Ross, from the Thomas Edison National Historic Park, who's also a town, been a town planner. And he assisted us in trying to identify a targeted neighborhood in the downtown corridor. As we all know, our downtown corridor is quite lengthy. We break it up into different segments. So we felt that with the advice of the consultant from the state to focus on the Tory Corner section of town for this, beginning of this grant, grants for five years and towards the end of the grant, if you want to change focus to other parts of Main Street, you may. And that's what we hopefully will do in years four and five if we are awarded the grant. So part of the grant application is not only to just identify and focus on your business community, but it's a very strong focus on your neighborhood for your residents, to improve your neighborhoods, to improve the quality of life for your residents. You, there will be beautification projects. You could put, invest in quality of community events, the sods, signage for, for the business owners. We know right in that corridor, we have the Lighthouse Cafe, the yoga ground, Siphon Paint. This area is adjacent to Phase Two. This area has just been also awarded the transportation grant that Ms. Lapore is working on to configure on how we're going to do the intersection to improve pedestrian safety and, and a focus on the Abe Lando parking lot in that area. That is, is very challenged. It's on Mr. Lapore's list too for capital improvement. So kind of like all the, everything's lining up perfectly for this little piece of West Orange to, to really have a good focus, that parking lot. As we all know, the police, uh, community service station is there for the West Orange Police Department as well as the firehouse is right in that area. And parking has been an issue. So we're, we're looking to hopefully configure that. We also have Kling Street, which some of the residents have permit. So we're, there's a lot to be focused on right there for quality life improvements. So part of the plan is to identify, is to create a five-year strategic plan. And part of the funds in the first year will be used for consultants to sit down with a committee of, of community support in that area to identify this. As Councilwoman McCartney mentioned earlier, Ms. Rose DeSenna, she had been instrumental in, in managing the grant back in the day for the valley. And some wonderful work was done. And that's what we look to do here. You have to identify five assets in the neighborhood. Of course, we have the Holy Trinity Food Pantry, which also houses a soup kitchen, Washington Elementary School. Both, both buildings are used to, to host meetings for the West Orange Hispanic Foundation, who's been instrumental working with St. Barnabas, especially through COVID. A lot of activity there, working with the community, vaccinations, as well as their toy drives and food drives. Again, I mentioned the West Orange Police Department's right there. The West Orange PAL is in, in the neighborhood up, up off Main Street. And again, we have long-time standing businesses. Jimmy Buffs has been there for over 50 years, Select Towing. So there's a lot of great businesses right there. So we will bring the plan to you if we are awarded the grant. If we are awarded, the grant is $125,000 a year. Township has to match each year with $25,000. Part of that could be in kind, you know. So we, mayor has committed to that for us. And, and it would be for a five-year, five-year grant. So we're very excited about it. Ms. Brill and Mr. Lapore has been working many hours to upload the information on all the data. We had to provide them with, they had to provide them with the census tract assessment information. They really hone in on the, the type of residential units as well as commercial mixed use. So it's a very focused, targeted plan that will be put together and brought to the council for, for review. Okay? So we're excited and let's all hope all their efforts. But again, a big thank you to Ms. Bill, Ms. Brill and Mr. Lapore and our grant writer. They really put in the hours. And, and Mr. Lapore, on his vacation days, he was working on this for us. So we appreciate that from him.
Thank you for that update. That's much appreciated. Also, if I can move to questions regarding Resolution 212-21. If someone can provide a definition of how West Orange defines vulnerable populations. I would appreciate that information.
Mr. Gross, are, can you provide that?
Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with SX Regional Health Commission for the hiring and management of support staff for the vulnerable populations outreach coordinator utilizing grant funds from the strengthening local public health capacity program through the New Jersey Department of Health Office of Local Public Health.
This is a, a grant that was received by the council a couple of meetings ago. And as part of that grant, it was identified that on top of a, a couple of our employees' regular schedule, that, that there was additional work that they could provide uniquely to this program, but was not included in their, their normal schedule work. So we've, and, and we had originally contemplated an agreement, which the council has adopted, hire one of our employees through the program. This now will then hire two more for the, for this grant program itself. So this is, just to some extent, is, is a way to keep us from having to pay overtime to employees who are working on this new project. It's appropriate because it's not, it's outside the scope of their regular job. But it is certainly responsibilities that they're uniquely qualified for individually. So that is the purpose behind this resolution. And as far as your question regarding the, the actual grant program, again, I think that most of that was presented to council previously. But I will, will, I'll, I'll pull it back up for you and send it out to you and certainly have members of the Health Department answer those questions directly for you.
Thank you. And I think that completes my questions. Council President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman McCartney?
Yeah, so I wanted to just follow up on Ms. Williams with the vulnerable population. So those would be individuals, individuals in town economically disadvantaged. The elderly, homeless even, chronic health conditions. Through the Health Department to, to assist them. It's part of, also part of the Sustainable Jersey certification to identify that population.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. And I, this is not to pull, because I will vote yes on Resolution 191. But I do look forward to meeting and welcoming the new deputy municipal clerk once town hall is opened or she joins us on one of ours in meeting. So congratulations, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I, I did want to also discuss, I am not pulling, however, am, would like to discuss. And I don't know if Mr. Alpert is here with us. Mr. Trank, is Mr. Alpert here for Resolution 201-21?
I'm not sure if Mr. Sullivan may be here as his representative.
I have both Joe Alpert and William Sullivan in the audience. Would you like to bring them both over?
Yes, please.
All right, so gentlemen, if your, your computer's going to change, don't do anything.
And for the members of the public, this is Resolution 201-21. And this is the resolution authorizing the township to execute the affordable, execute an affordable housing agreement. execute an affordable housing agreement governing the Tompkins Street property that's dedicated for low and moderate income housing. How are you, Mr. Sullivan? Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor Chairman President.
Good evening. And can we bring Joe Alpert over as well, Madam Moderator?
I am, I'm trying.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
I am not rushing, I promise.
Okay, I'm just asking to start it through you. There he is. Okay.
Wonderful. Hello, Mr. Alpert, good to see you again. Thank you for joining us. Um, I, I didn't have any questions except for disclarification for the public, for the purpose of the public, when we are talking about the median income for residents who qualify low or moderate, is that from the census or a state, state website? Where is that?
Actually, on a, could be found on a state website. It's HUD publishes median incomes for every county in New Jersey.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're, as per the COA regulations, that this project is 100% COA compliant. We'll be catering to people earning 60% of median income, down to 30% of Essex County median income.
Wonderful. And I understand there's, it's 17 units, correct?
That is correct.
Just let the public know, just share with the public with the breakdown of those 17 units are as far as number of bedrooms are concerned.
Sure. There are three one bedrooms. There are 10 two bedrooms and four three bedrooms.
Wonderful. And do you anticipate, is there an anticipation, construction start date?
Um, if successful tonight, we'd like to start in probably the second quarter of 2022.
And completion by?
Uh, it's probably a, a one year, we'll, we'll say one year. Probably could be a little sooner because it's a little smaller than our average project. Let's say one year to be conservative.
Okay, thank you so much. Did my council colleagues have any questions or comments? Uh, Councilwoman Williams, I saw your hand.
I, I don't have any questions, but I did have just one comment. Unfortunately, you're here, so I get to present this this evening. I just wanted to make sure we do a little bit of cleanup, if we can, on the Mitchell side of the street. There's a tremendous amount of garbage and a, a lot of, I think probably residents are utilizing the facility to dump personal trash. So if we could make sure that's attended to. And then I also wanted to ask Mr. Lepore if we have a schedule for sidewalk upgrades on Mitchell and that area specifically.
Good evening. I don't have an exact schedule because I want to make sure we're coordinating with the redevelopment of the Harvard Pred site. But we do have a CDBG grant for sidewalk and, and streetlight improvements on Mitchell Street from Valley Road down to the Orange Line.
Thank you.
And I, I do want to comment to Councilwoman Williams' comment that, you know, Mr. Alpert, his son Matt Alpert, the, uh, the sanitation provider and the people, Lucy and Melvin, the people at the building are, are making tremendous efforts to improve it. Because again, the council president has brought that to my attention on numerous occasions. And the police, the director of operations, Mr. Abbott, it's been tremendously helpful. We're trying to get some of those trucks out of the way. We got it off Central Avenue. Uh, we got the hauler to provide three or four bins. Uh, we got the fence fixed because of Mr. Alpert and his son's efforts. So again, I, I know Mr. Alpert understands the importance of, of this. And I know as we move into the Selecto Flash Biddleman site, and I think they have a conference call again on Thursday. And so I'm hopeful, while Mr. Alpert said not till the second quarter of next year, he's going to start Tompkins, I'm hoping he was just being conservative to manage expectations and that he understands the importance of getting it started and to get this whole neighborhood up and running. Because so far, it's a tremendous success. And, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Williams, that Mr. Alpert and his team have to continue to recognize that this corridor needs to be as clean as every other street in our town. So I, Joe, I'll let you comment.
I know I had. It, it was actually, you know, it was, it was tough at first because it wasn't into our normal routine. Uh, but now it is on a daily basis. Uh, we've moved the trash collection. And actually, I, I also want to compliment Mr. Trank and Mr. Lepore and, and Chief Abbott. We've moved it to the Mitchell Street side. Now we're cleaning it just about every day. Um, I've seen huge improvement. We also, you know, it's a city-owned lot, Selecto Flash, we've got to remember. But we brought in our landscaper to chop down all the weeds and clean it, refix the fence and put up some barriers, opaque barriers to the fencing. Uh, it's a large parcel and, and hard to keep clean, but we are now on it literally on daily basis. And it was a conservative estimate. You know, we, we have a little more work to do on Tompkins for the plans. And, and like I said, this, this pilot, but we, we, we want to start before the second quarter of next year.
I think it's also true that once you start construction on those lots, you have activity on the lots, construction people there. It's really going to reduce the, the opportunity, I think, for some of the illegal dumping that's happening too.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. I do see Councilman Rutherford, I'm, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Williams, are you done with the, for this resolution?
Thank you, Council President, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert, and thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for those clarify.
Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. On this, on this topic, 20121, Mr. Alpert, are you, is there any requirement for local labor? And are you open to, especially with the non-skilled positions, referrals for local labor to participate in the project?
Uh, we're, we're always open to that. We, we've done a very good job of incorporating. Uh, we haven't selected the general contractor. And at that time, we'll ma- we'll make it clear to them that that, they should use best efforts to hire locally. Which again, we have in our first two jobs in the valley and we plan to do in the third. So we are always open to it.
I'd like to put, to be helpful in that regard, given my, my day-to-day responsibility. I can certainly point out some folks that could certainly benefit from the job and be helpful in the project.
Yeah. And, and what we've done in the past, and I think, I think we actually did on Valley Road, maybe on the kickoff meeting, we would have a job there and I could reach out to your office.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I'll make a note to do that, Council.
Thank you very much, Councilman Rutherford. And for those members of the public who do not know what Councilman Rutherford's day job is, he is a pastor in our neighboring community and does hold job fairs and assist the, the community that's underserved and underprivileged in, in our neighboring communities. So thank you for, for that thought, Councilman Rutherford. I think that that'll be very helpful for, for your, for, for all of our communities. Um, I, and, and the last thing I, I, I just want to clarify, because I know, Mr. Alpert, I heard you say pilot. And when we say pilot, there's a lot of concern among our residents. So I just want to be very clear to our residents that we do have an affordable housing obligation that we have to fulfill. And the reason that the pilot exists is, well, one of the reasons is to be able to allow municipalities to attract developers such as Mr. Alpert. And that's a large part, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Alpert, if you can, what your, what your field is, what, what do you focus on?
Yeah. Uh, as an affordable housing developer, we do need to give the stakeholders, everyone who invests in these projects, some financial security. It does not mean we're exempt from taxes. We just pay a tax based on revenue collection. It goes up every time there's a rent increase. Um, and it gives the financial stability so we can build this housing. It's like I said, the township has a fairly large affordable housing obligation. And this means meet 17 family units of your obligation on, on this site. So we feel very good about meeting a, a housing goal, but also, you know, it's a social need.
Absolutely. Thank you for that clarification. I always like to take the opportunity, you never know who's new and listening and to, to help them understand that we do have a very large obligation to fulfill and, and grateful for your partnership with our township. And I think that is all we have for you gentlemen. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan, Mr. Alpert, for joining us. You have a good night. Um, Mr. Trank, I am going to ask you if you will, did I just lose that already? Can we please discuss Resolution 210? I'm not pulling it. I just, for the sake of the public, I recall someone during public comment asking about the, the reason for the area in need of rehabilitation. And I will post later the mayor's presentation that he did a full presentation at length to discuss this with council several months ago. But can you just explain to the public for their benefit what this is?
Yes, excellent. Thank you. Um, again, as correctly, your, your recollection is spot on. We talked about this in an earlier meeting, that when we talk about people, especially post-COVID and especially with the housing stock being so important, that this will allow that to the extent people make improvements in their homes, if this is adopted, if the planning board recommends it back to the town council upon receipt of Mr. Lepore's report that I know has been issued, that we, the, if there is an improvement or an added assessment or any type of tax increase, it can be phased in, when I see any, I mean, by, as a result of an improvement, and not as a result of normal tax increases, that it can be phased in over five years. And so the thinking was, you have to meet the statutory criteria. You have to have sewer and other infrastructure that's over 50 years. And, and that, why shouldn't we allow every taxpayer, if they make improvements in their project, if this is recommended by the planning board and meets the criteria, to phase in these improvements over five years? So again, this is, would be available to all property owners if they meet the, the criteria. And if this council approves it when it comes back after the planning board considers Mr. Lepore's report. So that's what it's about.
Thank you, Mrs. Trank. And just to, I want to always clarify, that's an area in need of rehabilitation, not an area in need of redevelopment, very, two very different things. This benefits the residents when we want to make any improvements. And it's not a deduction, it's, it's a phase in, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. Five years, yes.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand up.
Uh, thank you, Council President. At our council meeting, when we discussed this, I asked, I believe it was Mr. Gross, but I could be wrong. Perhaps it was you, Mr. Trank. Um, I asked for some data with regard to tax collection in other towns that have already made this designation. Now perhaps I missed it in my email, but I've not seen that. Do we have any of that data?
You mean, are, are you asking whether or not the tax collection rates are significantly different in towns that have this as opposed to not? Or I'm, I'm.
Yeah. So it was really trying to get at two things there. One, to see what the actual tax collection was, if that in, in fact wasn't impacted, you know, in the first year or the second year that this program was established in those towns. Um, and then also to see, you know, if that spurred, you know, the purpose of this is to encourage folks to, to invest in their property. I wanted to see if in fact that was realized. If it's not realized, then I, you know, I think it's.
It's somewhat chicken and egg because you don't really know. This is, this is to incentivize property owners, particularly residential property owners, to, to make, if, if they're on the fence a little bit about whether or not to make an improvement, whether, you know, to, to go ahead and, and if they, you know, with, with phasing in any potential tax impact, it gives property owners, particularly residential property owners, the, the ability to have some satisfaction that they're not going to get zonked with taxes immediately. So you're, you're, it, it is difficult, you know, you could look at data on it, but you really can't read too much in it because it's, for the most part, you're not talking about major thefts overall. So it's kind of hard to, to, to draw a conclusion. Certainly I can tell you the towns that I've been involved in, that have done this, everyone, their tax collection rates are extremely high. Uh, and, and they, they, they have done very, very well over the last 20 years since, since going on. So whether or not, you know, I, whether, whether or not you could take the data and, and draw a direct line to how much of that impact was, was done based on this program, it's very difficult to say, because towns are doing other things as well. But having said that, the towns that I know of that have done it have all done very well overall. So.
So this, I'd like to see the data on that to, in, in particularly with regard to commercial properties that may be able to take advantage of this as well. You know, if, if you're seeing, uh, commercial properties make those investments and then not, you're not getting the tax impact right away, that might, that might not be a good situation for us to be in.
Well, just keep in mind, in, in my experience, for the most part, while, while there are commercial establishments and rules for commercial establishments, how to use it, for the most part, it's been used by residentials in the areas that I'm, that, that, that I'm been involved with. Number one. Number two, as far as data is concerned, there is no specific data that tracks, you know, these types of, of, of pro- pro- you know, projects that is published. Uh, you, you, you know, we, you, you'd actually have to get into like, take, take a town like South Orange, which has been doing it for 20 years. You'd have to get back and start looking at their data again and looking at their, their collection data and their assessing information on, on a, on a very granular level, which we don't have the resources to do in order to get that kind of data you're looking for.
All right. And the other question was, and I think you addressed this at the last meeting, and unfortunately, I'm not looking at my, I don't have my notes with me. Are pilots still allowed when you have this designation townwide?
Yes.
Well.
Absolutely. Pilots are on a project-by-project basis. They're not on a, they, this is a much broader type of phase in. As you said correctly, Councilman, it would be related to trying to spur, as, as Mr. Rose said, particularly it may have an impact on a residential area. Presumably people who do commercial projects or massive apartment projects, residential or otherwise, are doing them based upon, you know, supply, demand and market. But this is not in to the exclusion, but as the council president said, it has nothing to do with a pilot. This is a rehabilitation program.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Castellino on the same resolution? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So just to dig in the weeds a little bit, for example, the property that was mentioned earlier this evening, you have a situation where you have a single residential home and say that application goes through, becomes a, you know, an apartment building with so many units. So where, where would this come into play? Like Mr. Trank, so I would assume it wouldn't because.
No, it would, it would, it would. If, if, if they make, so again, let's assume something of that nature was approved and they now spend X millions of dollars. Uh, typically when the CLO is issued, the tax assessor, part of his responsibilities is to go out and say, it's no longer worth X, it's worth Y. You know, it's basically an added assessment. So he would do his job and make that finding. But the tax impact of that or the increased assessment would occur not in one year. It, it would occur over five years. So he would not, he would step up 20%, 40%, 60%, 80% to 100%. And it would apply if you, if you did a new deck on your house or a new kitchen or a new bathroom and the tax assessor therefore increased the value of your house from, you know, you know, 250, 300,000. Whatever the impact of that $50,000 increase of value on taxes, our rate's about 4% give or take, you wouldn't get hit with all in one year.
Well, you wouldn't get hit with a new kitchen, a new bathroom. It's a, it's a new add-on, I believe.
Oh, you would.
In addition of a new room.
Oh, yes, you would.
You certainly could get, you know, if, if you put in a, a, a new bath or a new ba- a new kitchen, for argument's sake, and it's a $50,000 kitchen, that if, if accepted, that, that kitchen raises the value of your home by $50,000, the market value, then you would, you would normally get hit right up front with that. With this program, you would get hit 10,000 a, a year for five years. And that's why, that's the incentive part of this, to get people to. And that's why that's the incentive part of this, to get people to invest in their homes. And and and, you know, one of the, one of the, I want to say side benefit, but it is a major benefit. When you get people, you give people incentives to invest in their homes, they're also taking care of code issues and things of that nature. So the overall maintenance of of your community housing really increases dramatically. Because just because of the the culture.
So many investors coming in. So let's face it. And I'm sure this is where Councilman Rutherford is going and some of the comments from the public this evening. I mean, with new investors coming in, we're looking at redevelopment in the downtown. We hope people purchase properties, renovate them, improve them. Any of those type of situations, they'll tax increase. They will have the increase, but it would be, it would just be paid over five years as opposed into what a immediate increase.
It would be it would be phased in, phased in.
Phased in.
Twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred percent. Again, Westfield, and I'm I'm going to follow up on on Councilman Rutherford's request. I think, as Ms. Gray said, it's going to be really hard to sync it up. But I know Westfield did this a few years ago where, again, they have an older housing stock, the beautiful community like ours, it's an older housing stock like ours. And they they did this. Again, I don't know that they were able to track it. But I think the one thing that maybe they can track and we could track is our more permits bill pulled, you know, as a result of that. Again, all good stuff. That means people stay here. That means that people, like some of us on this call, will invest in our properties as opposed to. So again, it's a balancing act, but it certainly does help address and does help individuals as opposed to, as some people have suggested, where you only help, you know, new developers or new developments. It helps people, you know, age in place, stay in place. And as Mr. Gross says, deal with some of maybe their capital issues and property maintenance issues that have not been on the front burner.
What what are the biggest detriments to 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 community quality, to quality of life is in in communities where they don't have a culture of of maintaining their homes? If you look at all the successful communities, they they, you know, they're active with code enforcement. They they're they do things to try to to spur this type of activity within the community. Providing incentives only furthers that goal. And it really is a huge benefit overall to the community.
So so just, I'm sorry, Councilman, just one last question. So I make the investment. It's year two. I'm going to flip the property. The new owner, where how does, where have, what happens to that phase in? I know when we gave out grants, the township grant or the state grants for people to improve their property, they could not sell that property for the seven years. How does it work with this? Like where? So now, you know, it's on two years in of the five years phase in. I'm going to flip the property, especially on these larger commercial investments and these apartment rentals. How do we, you know, what what, you know, does a new buyer get burdened with that tax that was not phased in the year one and two?
Again, they don't get burdened, meaning they they get the benefit of it. So yes, if, again, let's use the example of where Mr. Gross said, you improve your kitchen, you spend fifty thousand dollars. As a result of that, fifty thousand dollars, if that's what increases the value of your house, you know, again, four percent, I can't do the math that quick. But rather than getting assessed with that entire tax in year one, it's going to be over five years. So if in year two you sold your house, then tho- those taxes will increase in year three, four and five to basically bring you back up to what anybody else would have had. So you're getting a benefit. You're not getting a burden.
So now I'm buying a house, so buyer beware. Do I have to disclose to the buyer? Is it going to be noted in the tax record that there this phase in exists? Like, so you know, you know, I'm in the title business, you you get a tax search, will be noted on the.
So before we come back, it's an excellent question. Before we come back here, assuming the planning board agrees this is a good idea and agrees with Mr. Lepore that the criteria is met, it's an excellent point.
Yeah, you know, new new buyer runs title, they get the tax search report. Will it show on the tax search that that assessment will be phased in? So they are aware, just like if there was a sit tax on it?
Yeah, I would, I would, it has to be because I, this doesn't just automatically happen. The person has to ask for the five-year phase in. You you know, Mr. Dylan, the tax assessor is not going to, you know, he will make people aware of it exists, but the person is going to have to basically agree to it. So we'll find out how that buyer or subsequent owner is aware of that rehabilitation phase in. So it's a very good question and we'll find out.
I I I'm going through it right now, and it's the first time in in my life that that I've had these particular questions. But as a seller of a property now, you have to do seller seller disclosures. And one of the disclosures that you're required to give is whether there are any known future investments. So that it is part of the closing process. I I've come to experience.
But something like that, I don't think would be on someone's radar radar.
It has to be disclosed. It has to be disclosed. If you have any municipal assessments, that has to be disclosed in the seller's documents, or else you can, it it can mess up the entire transaction.
Exactly. But but the, you know, but our sellers may not realize that that is disclosed. It has to be explained to them when they when they request it. So they know when they sell the property, they'll, you know, they're responsible for that.
But when you have a municipal assessment on a property, use, for example, something easy like a condo where you have a HOA fee that's going to be over a certain period of time. That has to be disclosed, and it's and it is part of the title search. So i- it's going to be public knowledge and public information. I understand where you're going with that, and and it would be a concern. But with any municipal assessments that are forthcoming on my documents for the state of New Jersey, all of that has to be disclosed.
And when we do, when we do tax searches, when we do a tax search now, one of the places it goes is to the assessor's office. And if there's any pending assessments, it has to be reported. So it's definitely part of it.
Well, let's find, let's let's find out.
But, Council, it's also standard language in every residential real estate contract that I'm familiar with. I mean, it's, you know, added assessments are are part of the contract. They have to be disclosed.
I I agree. I agree. Thank you, Mr. Casey. The point I'm being is our residents may not realize that when they're selling their property.
But so buyer, we're worried about. It's the buyer. You want the buyer to know about it. That's why I'm sure that you're all correct. It's going to show up in a tax search because it's going to be recorded in the tax records. It's the only way our our assessor and our collector would know to increase it twenty percent a year on that added assessment. So we'll get you a definitive answer, and I'll try to get you examples from Westfield or other towns so you can actually see it and we can implement it correctly.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
And thank you. And and I I will say, and I I heard both of your discussions, and I think that they're very valid. I I would look at it in in terms of, you know, obviously, a benefit to the resident, the homeowner themselves, whether they're going to stay in the property or sell. But also, when it comes to businesses, because we do have our tax rate being what that is, it might incentivize some some business that otherwise would not think twice to come to town, to come to town and make that investment. So I don't see it as a negative, although I'm sure, you know, there are those who who may. But I think that it's an incentive all the way around that ultimately benefits us because it does, you know, within a five-year timeframe, you know, generate that revenue.
I agree.
I think I think, do any of my, I don't have any other questions on our consent agenda. I know it's been a long consent agenda. Councilman Rutherford, your hand is up. Did you just not put it down or did you have another question? Okay. Any anything else from my council colleagues on our consent agenda? No, Madam Clerk, thank you, Council.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
No move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, before we go on, I meant to acknowledge our chief of police. There is a resolution wherein our chief of police in our our department were awarded a grant in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars for body worn cameras. Greatly appreciate always the effort to save our taxpayers tax dollars, but also making sure that we are investing those funds in the appropriate places that will continue to garner trust for our community with our law enforcement officers. So thank you, Chief, and and to your your department for pursuing that. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. So we are now on.
No, that's fine. We have a couple of resolutions that were pulled with regard to the budget. I don't know if you wanted to do the budget hearing now?
Mr., yeah, I think we can, Mr. Gross.
Actually, we don't have a hearing this evening. We 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 do have, there there is a amendment that we have to read into the record and approve. And then then that 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 will trigger a hearing for September fourteenth.
Okay.
There's another resolution which was held, which needs to be tabled until, also until September fourteenth, which is the adoption.
Correct.
Okay, so we 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 held two fifteen for those members in the public, which is the resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-one municipal budget. And we also are holding over two thirteen dash twenty-one, which is the resolution to amend the introduced budget. And we are reading the municipal budget into the record by title, correct, Mr. Gross?
Well, actually, today, we're going to read the two thousand twenty-one budget amendment number one into the record. And then we'll need a an offer and a vote on that for today. And then we'll have a hearing on that in on the fourteenth, and then hopefully adoption of the budget as well.
Okay, so my council colleagues, I know that we did receive in your email. It is titled and it is posted for those members of the public, the twenty twenty-one budget amendment number one. I just want to make sure that everyone has that. It was emailed to us.
And I and I will, I will read it for.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gross.
So sit back and relax because this is going to take a little while. Two thousand twenty-one budget amendment number one, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Be resolved that the township council, the township of West Orange, on this seventeenth day of August, two thousand twenty-one, that amendment number one to the two thousand twenty-one local municipal budget of the township of West Orange is hereby introduced and on first reading. And the township clerk is directed to read the title thereof in full. And in and in her honor, I will read it so she doesn't have to. Be a further resolve that said amendment, number one, be published in the West Orange Chronicle in the issue of August twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. A public hearing for amendment number one will be September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one at seven P M. at Town Hall Council Chambers, located at sixty-six West Orange, sixty-six Main Street, West Orange, oh, seven, oh, five, two, or via Zoom if necessary, at which time the place which at which time and place objections to said amendment may be presented by taxpayers or interested persons. Copy of amendment number one are available in the Office of Business Administrator at the municipal building at sixty-six Main Street during the hours of eight thirty to four thirty P M. I'll note that it will also be available on the website. Okay, introduce budget, current fund, general revenues. Surplus anticipated, two thousand twenty-one, introduced from four million, eight seventeen, nine forty-four, twenty-three to four million, two oh six, three ninety-nine point forty-nine, a reduction of six hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Total surplus anticipated from eight, four million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-three cents to four million, two oh six, three ninety-nine point four-nine, a reduction of six hundred and eleven, five hundred and forty-four point seventy-four. Licenses, alcoholic beverages from eighty-one thousand, nine twelve seventy-five to eighty-six thousand, seven fifty-seven, eighty-six, an increase of four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and eleven cents. Other licenses from fifty-one, oh, forty-seven, eighty-nine to fifty-six, six eighty-nine, oh, eight, to for a change of fifty-six, forty-one, nineteen. Fees and permits from two hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and nine cents to two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, a reduction of thirteen thousand, oh, fifty-eight, eighty-four. Fines and cost municipal court from three hundred and eighty-one, seven twenty-five, twenty-one to three hundred and eighty-five, seven twenty-six, fifty, an increase of four thousand and one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Interest and cost on taxes from six hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and nine cents to seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-three and sixty-five cents, an increase of sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, I'm sorry, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-six cents. Parking meters from four thousand, four thousand, four thirty-seven, oh, two to four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six, eighty-nine, a decrease of thirteen cents. Interest on investments and deposits from sixty-nine, five fifty-one, forty to seventy-one, nine forty-five, oh, three, an increase of two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Payments in lieu of taxes. Eagle Rock Senior Citizen Housing from one hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and forty-eight cents to one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, an increase of five thousand, seven seventy, fifty-two. Woodland Valley from twenty-eight, one ten forty-five to thirty thousand, six sixty-seven, thirty-five, an increase of twenty-five, fifty-six, ninety. From Safe Barnabas, from two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seventy-five cents to two hundred and forty dollars, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eight cents, a reduction of fifty thousand, six twenty-two, sixty-seven. Prism from a million, one, one point, one million dollars to one point, one, one million, one hundred and twenty-six, six hundred and forty thousand dollars, thirty-four cents, an increase of twenty-six thousand, six forty, thirty-four. Sewer user charges from seven million, one eighty-six to seventy-five, forty-five to seven million, one forty-five, nine seventy-one, forty-two, a decrease of thirty-four, three oh four, oh, three. New Jersey Transit from zero to four thousand and ninety, an increase of four thousand and ninety. Total Section A local revenues from ten million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents to ten million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-six thousand, forty-seven cents, an increase of twenty-four, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Miscellaneous revenue, Section C Dedicated Uniform Construction Code, offset with appropriations for NJSA forty A four dash thirty-six and NJAC five colon twenty-three, four point one nine. Uniform Construction Code fees from six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents to seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-three cents, an increase of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-one cents. Total Section C Dedicated Uniform Construction Code fees, offset with appropriations from six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, seventy-three cents and eighty, and seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents to seven hundred and fifteen, four hundred and ninety-one dollars, thirty-three, increase of thirty-seven, four seventeen, fifty-one. Miscellaneous revenue, Section D, Special Items of General Revenues Anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services Shared Services Agreement, offset with appropriation. Essex Fell's Inter Local Service Agreement from eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents to twelve thousand, fourteen dollars and four cents, an increase of two hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Total Section D Shared Service Agreements, offset with appropriation from eleven thousand, seven seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents to twelve thousand, oh, fourteen, oh, four, increase to two thirty-five, fifty-six. Miscellaneous revenue, Section G, Special Items of General Revenue Anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services, other special items. Comcast Cable TV from six hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents to six hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and oh cents, an increase of seven thousand, seven thirty-five, thirty-one. Extra duty administrative fee from one hundred and twenty-seven, oh, fifty, forty-seven to one hundred and thirty-six, three sixty-nine, sixty, increase. Extra duty administrative fee from one hundred and twenty-seven oh fifty forty-seven to one hundred and thirty-six three sixty-nine sixty, increase of nine thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and thirteen cents. General capital fund balance from one hundred and sixty-three thousand oh ninety-six seventy-nine to three hundred and ninety-four thousand one forty-one twenty-seven, an increase of two hundred and thirty-one thousand oh forty-four forty-eight. Brand leases from one hundred and sixty-one eight eighty-eighty-six to one hundred and seventy-three nine thirty-nine sixty-eight, an increase of twelve thousand fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. Hotel tax from four hundred and thirty-three one ninety-one twenty to four hundred and sixty-nine oh fifty-four thirty-nine, an increase of thirty-five eight sixty-three nineteen. Medical transport billing services from a million one fifty-six two thirty-seven ten to a million one fifty-five six sixty-four eighteen, a reduction of five hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Rental for environmental center from forty-two thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars success to forty-four thousand one seventy-nine, an increase of one thousand six thirty-one ninety-four. Rock Spring Country Club from one hundred thousand to one hundred and twenty-three one eighty, an increase of twenty-three thousand one eighty fifty. Supplemental surfees from sixty-seven thousand one one-two fifty-two to sixty-four thousand six fifty-one seventy-three, a decrease of two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven nine. Uniform Fire Safety Act from eighty-three thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents to eighty-five thousand six hundred and thirteen oh-seven, a reduction of one thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents. Total Section G special items of general revenues anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Services, other special items from three million two twenty-four eight thirty-one seventy-six to three million seventy-one seven thirty-five thirty, an increase of four hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and three dollars and fifty-four cents. Summary of revenues surplus anticipated sheet number four number sheet four number one from four million eight seventeen-nine ninety-four twenty-three to four million two oh-six four nine, I'm sorry, three ninety-nine forty-nine, a reduction of six hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Miscellaneous revenues total Section A local revenues from ten million four sixty-four four twenty-two fifty-eight to ten million four eighty-eight six forty-six forty-seven, an increase of twenty-four two twenty-three eighty-nine. Total Section C dedicated universe uniform construction code fees offset with appropriations six hundred and seventy-eight thousand oh seventy-three eighty-two to seven hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety-one thirty-three, increases thirty-seven four seventeen fifty-one. Total Section D special items of general revenue anticipated with prior consent of the Director of Local Government Service shared services agreement from eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents to twelve thousand oh fourteen oh four, an increase of two hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Total Section G special items of general revenue prior written consent the Director of Local Government Services, other special items for three million two twenty-four eight thirty-one seventy-six to three million six seventy-one seven thirty-five thirty, an increase of four hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and three dollars and fifty-four cents. Local Government Service, other special items, I'm sorry, total miscellaneous revenues from twenty-three million six eighty-four oh sixty-two forty to twenty-four million one ninety-two eight ninety-two ninety-one, an increase of five hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-one cents. Five, subtotal general revenues items one, two, three, and four from thirty-one million nine fifty-three forty-three oh nine to thirty-one million eight forty-seven five seventy-eight eighty-six, a reduction of a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and thirty-four, I'm sorry, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. Minimum library tax from two million two twenty-two eight thirty-six forty-nine to two million two twenty-one two sixty-two eighty-two, a reduction of one thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Total amount to be raised by taxes to support the municipal budget sixty-one million eight hundred and sixty-four dollars five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents to sixty-one million eight sixty-three nine seventy-five seventy-two, reduction of one thousand five seventy-three sixty-seven. Total general revenues number seven from ninety-three million eight fifteen eight ninety-two forty-eight to ninety-three million seven eleven five fifty-four fifty-eight, a reduction of a hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Current fund general appropriations. Department of Health and Welfare, Division of Health, General Health Services Salary and Wages from seven hundred and six thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars to seven hundred and thirty dollars, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, an increase of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Unclassified current fund surplus to pool utility from zero to thirty thousand two sixty-five ninety-nine, an increase thirty thousand two sixty-five ninety-nine. Total operations item eight A within caps from sixty-one million six hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents to sixty-one being seven hundred and fourteen dollars seven hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents, an increase of fifty-four thousand one twenty-one ninety-nine. Contingent from one thousand to one thousand, no change. Total operating, including contingent within the caps, sixty-one million six sixty-one two sixty-one point nine seven sixty-one seven fifteen three eighty-three ninety-six, increase fifty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Salaries and wages from thirty-three thousand two eighty-nine two sixty-five to thirty-three thousand three thirteen one twenty-one, an increase of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. H one total general appropriations for municipal purposes within cap seventy million seventy thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars to seventy million one hundred and one twenty-four nine ninety-two twenty-one, an increase fifty-four thousand one twenty-one ninety-nine. Shared services agreement salary and wage from ten thousand four seventy-three ninety-three to twelve thousand oh one four oh four, an increase of fifteen forty-eleven. Total inter-local municipal service agreements from ten thousand to four seventy-three ninety-three to twelve thousand oh one four oh four, increase of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and eleven cents. Total operation excluded from cap from ten million two sixty-four six fifty-two sixty-nine to ten million two sixty-six one ninety-two eighty, an increase of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and eleven cents. Detailed salaries and wages from twenty-six thousand eight sixty-four ninety-three to twenty-eight thousand four oh five oh four, an increase of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and eleven cents. Deferred charges two hundred and fif- two thousand and fifteen severance liabilities from a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to zero. Total deferred charges municipal excluded from cap from eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to seven hundred and four, a reduction of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Total general appropriation for municipal purposes excluded from caps from twenty million to
Seventeen.
Two seventeen two oh two oh two to twenty million oh fifty-eight seven forty-two seventy-three, a reduction of one fifty-eight four fifty-nine eight twenty-nine. Total total appropriations excluded from cap twenty million two seventeen two oh two sixty-two to twenty million oh fifty-eight seven forty-two seventy-three, a reduction of one fifty-eight four fifty-nine eighty-nine. Subtotal general appropriations. Items H one and C.
Oh.
Oh, and oh ninety million two eighty-eight oh seventy-two eighty-four to ninety million one eighty-three seven thirty-four ninety-four, a reduction of a hundred and four three thirty-seven ninety. L subtotal general appropriation, I'm sorry, total general appropriation from ninety-three eight fifteen eight ninety-two forty-eight to ninety-three seven eleven five fifty-four fifty-eight, a reduction of a hundred and four thousand three thirty-seven ninety. H one total general appropriations for seventy million seventy thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents to seventy million one twenty-four nine ninety-two twenty-one, an increase of fifty-four thousand one twenty-one ninety-nine. Municipal purposes within the caps, operations excluded from caps, operations shared service agreement from ten thousand four seventy-three ninety-three to twelve thousand oh forty-one nineteen, that is an increase, even though it doesn't say it there, of one thousand forty dollars and eleven cents. Total operations excluded from gas from ten million two sixty-four six fifty-two sixty-nine to ten million two sixty-six one ninety-two eighty, also an increase of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and eleven cents. Total deferred charges sheet twenty-eight from eight hundred and sixty-four thousand to seven hundred and four thousand, a reduction of a hundred and sixty thousand. Total general appropriations ninety-three million eight hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-two forty-eight cents and ninety-three four hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and forty-four, I'm sorry, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, a reduction of a hundred to three hundred and four three thirty-seven ninety. Pool dedicated revenues. Operating surplus anticipated from thirteen thousand three oh five seventy-three to forty-one thousand nine thirty-two oh seven, an increase of twenty-eight thousand six twenty-six thirty-four. Operating surplus anticipated with prior consult consent of the Director of Local Government Services, total operating surplus anticipated from thirteen three oh five seventy-three to forty-one nine thirty-two oh seven, an increase of twenty-eight six twenty-six thirty-four. Membership fees from two hundred and fifty-eight thousand oh ninety-five to two hundred and eleven seven seventy-one, a reduction of forty-six thousand three twenty-four. Miscellaneous from seventy thousand one fifteen to fifty-seven five forty-six sixty-seven, a reduction of twelve thousand five sixty-eight thirty-three. Current fund surplus from zero to thirty thousand two sixty-five ninety-nine, an increase of thirty thousand two sixty-five ninety-nine. Total utility revenues from three hundred and forty-one thousand five fifteen seventy-three to three hundred and forty-one thousand five fifteen seventy-three, no change. Open space and recreation, farmland and historic preservation trust fund summary of program rate assessed from point oh one to point zero zero five, a change of point zero zero five reduction. And I am done. That completes reading of of the amendment. We can entertain questions and or a an offer to adopt.
I just had a question, Mr. Gross, with respect to the open space. The rate assessed, what was the what was the reason for the decrease?
It was a it was a typo. The the amounts that we anticipated were correct, but there was a typo on the sheet specifying the wrong range rate, so it was just correctional typo.
Thank you. I also had a question with respect to, if we go back to page one, the licenses. Fees and permits where there was a decrease of thirteen thousand fifty-eight eighty-four. What what types, obviously, those aren't construction code permits. What type of permits are these?
This is generally could be health, health department, could be a lot of, a lot of different places. One of the resolutions that you did pass this evening was a three-year average. Because of the COVID crises, the the division allowed municipalities that were hit hard on their regular revenues last year, as we were, to use a three-year average, so we were able to, but by using that three-year average, a lot of the changes you see here tonight are based on the fact that we were able to anticipate more revenue, anticipating that this year was going to be better. So, and that's to the benefit, that allows us to utilize less surplus, that leaves more surplus for future use. So, a lot of these changes up and down are based on three-year average routines.
Okay, thank you. Did any of my council colleagues have any any questions on the amendment, Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you. I may be reading this wrong, but I'm looking at shared service agreements offset with appropriations, I think it's line fifty-two. Essex Fells I L S A eleven thousand seven seventy-eight forty-eight to twelve thousand fourteen oh four, thirty-five fifty-six, it's got a percentage change that is not the same as the following line, which has the exact same numbers, and that's also repeated in in other spaces. I'm trying to understand why.
What page are you on, Councilman? I'm so sorry.
I've got it just in the Excel spreadsheet, so I'm, it's all on one page for me, but this is line. The same thing happens in line forty-six and forty-seven, as well as lines fifty-two and fifty-three. We have identical numbers.
Oh, you're looking at the percentage, I'm sorry, you're looking at the Excel, I I was looking for percentages, you're looking at the Excel sheet. I'm not, okay, I'll get there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That 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 Excel sheet percentage, those are, those are those are vestiges from from an initial version, and they don't to the actual ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, because I'm sorry, I missed that.
They're not published in the ordinance, that's just a vestige.
Got it. And then, just for clarity, I think, unless I didn't hear properly, you skipped line sixty-four reserve paid debt service. That wasn't announced.
I'm sorry, Councilman, can can everyone please, if you're not muted, I'm hearing background noise, is that? Let me mute myself, go ahead.
If I did, I'll read it now. Reserve to pay debt service one hundred forty-one thousand one dollars seventy cents to to two seventy-one seven oh four twenty-nine, an increase of one hundred and thirty-seven oh two fifty-nine. This 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 concept of reading this into the record is such a relic. And we all do it, and and I would love to say that we read it perfectly, but sometimes we don't.
And that's Great job, Mr. Gross, thank you.
Always glad there's a written, a a written document that we actually rely on.
Okay, if we do not have, oh, Councilwoman McCartney. You're muted, Councilwoman.
Sorry, I was on the Excel sheet page. I was looking at for the pool membership, I'm really just going to assume that that's due to COVID.
Yes.
I mean, is it right?
Yes.
From two hundred and fifty-eight to two eleven?
Yes.
Okay, and the other one, actually, the last line, one thirty-six. Where did we leave off with that discussion on increasing the open space tax?
Well, at this point, the council really has not. I don't think had a discussion about it. It is certainly still up for discussion. We are, we are at a level that now that allows us to qualify for for grants, but we are definitely low as compared to other other municipalities, the average in the county. One of the problems we have is we believe you can, you could increase it without without going for referendum, except that we have not been able to establish documents that prove what the referendum adopted yet. So, we've, we've, we've gone to the county, and the county hasn't been able to provide us with the documents. We found them locally here at Wall, so if that that that's an operational issue for us as to how to do it, if you decide you wanted to increase it. But certainly, there's nothing that precludes council from having a discussion about increasing the percentage that you're going to collect for open space.
That may be the reason why it was just came up in pending matters, because we were trying to figure out how to do it and what that increase might look like.
Well, again, you you you, we think, we think you can go to one percent, which basically doubles from where you are now. So, that's
That look like as a tax increase, though?
Well, you mean, it would be in two hundred and two hundred and fifty-plus thousand dollars that you'd be collecting in taxes.
And to a taxpayer, that's two that have percentage point?
No, about a percentage, percentage point is about six hundred thousand, so it's less than a half percent.
All my other question was on line sixty-three, the, I'm looking at the spreadsheet, the rental of the environmental center. At forty-two thousand going up to forty-four, I recall a time in a place where we were at ninety-five thousand. I do remember that we waived some of the rent during Sandy, because there was such an increase in the debris that was being collected and processed there. But can you explain why that's at forty-four?
Yeah, well, in the next contract,
Okay.
the next contract, they didn't bid as much.
Okay, and that contract comes up when, at the end of the year again, or?
Two more years.
Oh. Okay. Thank you, that was, those are my notes.
Any other questions from my council colleagues? Now, I do not see any. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve two thirteen dash twenty-one?
Someone?
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown? All right, so the resolution to adopt the municipal budget is being held over until September fourteenth?
Fourteenth, yes.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
I just want to, Madam Clerk read number two thirteen dash twenty-one when asking for the vote on that, and I want to make sure with, I thought the two thirteen was held over and that, that this amendment, amendment had a different number. Mike, Mr. Gross, am I correct about that?
Two fifteen is the adoption that's being held over. Two thirteen is the one I just read in.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Okay. Okay, so we're on to ordinances on second and final reading.
I, I, thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we open that, I just want to get clarification from legal with respect to, because the administration is not ready and we want to adjourn this hearing, I'm sorry, we want to adjourn one of the items that are on for second and final reading. Do we open up the hearing and immediately adjourn it?
Correct, adjourn it to a specific date so the public knows when the hearing will be.
Do we recess it to a specific, it's a motion to recess?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so when we get to that, I will make that motion. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I just wanted to.
No, no, that's fine. Okay, so twenty-six forty-eight dash twenty-one, calendar year twenty-twenty-one, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some more.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on ordinance two six four eight dash two one?
You would do this by using the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And we have no hands raised.
Thank you.
Do any of the council members have any questions or comments?
None.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve twenty-six forty-eight dash twenty-one?
Some more.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown? Ordinance twenty-six fifty-one dash twenty-one, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various projects pursuant to the downtown redevelopment plan, buy-in in the township of West Orange, appropriating thirteen million dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of thirteen million dollar bonds or notes of the township to finance the cost thereof.
So I, council colleagues, as, as I expressed earlier, because the administration is not ready for us to move on this, neither is the council, I believe, I am asking, I'm going to make a motion to,
recess.
Recession, thank you, until our next town council meeting, which is scheduled on September fourteenth. And hopefully, we will have some information while in advance of that date, where we can have a discussion.
I second the motion to recess until September fourteenth.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Excuse me, so you're going to table this to the next meeting?
Recess it until the next meeting, yes.
Yeah, table recess, okay.
Ordinances on sec, I'm sorry, ordinances on first reading, twenty-six fifty-two dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash thirty-two point two, restricted parking zones of the revised ordinances of West Orange, handicap parking spot fourteen, Glenon Place. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some more.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, but I just had a question. But my vote is yes.
Okay, should we continue the vote and then you'll ask?
Yeah.
Okay. Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that this was already, that the signage was already in place. Do we have, do we, I don't see Mr. Laporte on, so he may not be able to answer that question. Okay, never.
Reading, sorry, I'm sorry, Council, but this is only a first reading?
Yes.
Wouldn't get in place until it's approved?
That's my question.
We would not be able to enforce until it's actually adopted. So I, I cannot tell you specifically, but I would think that.
It's not.
Right, it hasn't been approved yet.
I, I understand, but the signage is there, so I just wanted to make sure it's not being enforced until we approve it.
Oh, the signage is there, is that?
Yes.
Oh.
We'll get that tomorrow. Okay. Take care of that tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and possibly, I, I'm not sure if this was a holdover, or, well, no, it's not a holdover, because we did first reading July twenty-first, but thank you for that, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Okay, ordinance twenty-six fifty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-six fifty-three dash twenty-one, and ordinance of the township of West Orange approving an application for a long-term tax exemption and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with Tompkins Street Apartments Urban Renewal LLC. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some more. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown? Okay, twenty-six fifty-four dash twenty-one, and ordinance supplementing chapter four and establishing chapter four, section forty of the general ordinances of the township of West Orange, entitled West Orange Township Civilian Complaint Review Board. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some more. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, for introduction, but I do have a couple of questions that I.
Okay, let's go through the roll call and then.
Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes, and thank you. Chief Abbott, are you with us?
Sure am.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilwoman McCartney had questions, and Councilwoman Castellino. Go ahead, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you for hanging in there. I, though I do support this, I do have questions, I understand, and I, and again, this is also new, so I don't really know what the status is. I know there is an Assembly Bill forty-six fifty-six that reviews the complaints that impact social justice. They are appropriating eight hundred thousand dollars in the training. The Senate Bill two ninety-six, two nine six-three, they are appropriating, appropriating six hundred thousand. I don't know if they're pending, or have they been passed? Though I do support the civilian review board, again, I know this is new. We have a new attorney general also, and I know this is all on their website, investing in the police training and accountability, reestablishing confidence. I understand all of that, but are there, have the guidelines been established for the sake of the police officers, as well as the volunteers that will ultimately serve on this review board?
So they're, they're kind of separate distinct things. The, the training that's coming down the pike, and a lot of it's already come out, mandatory training is all for the police officers. The CCRB is really for the public to, it's, it's actually, you know, and I've had these discussions with union officials, it's an examination of me for all practical purposes. It's not an examination of the individual police officers. So let's, for argument's sake, say we decide that the CCRB will meet quarterly, and they can only review cases that have already been, I'll use adjudicated or settled. Sometimes, you know, there's a settlement with the unions and the, the party. So they look at that, and they, the CCRB determines if the level of discipline, if any, was imposed properly, it was consistent with the infraction. You know, they, they can ask to have a case reexamine, they can't order anything. They don't investigate, and they don't have subpoena power. So, you know, once again, it's like I reaffirm with the unions, it, it's an examination of me that I'm overseeing the internal affairs function properly.
My understanding, you're on a pretty tight ship? Okay, I guess, I, I guess I was under the impression that there would be training also ultimately for the volunteers?
There is mandatory training. It has to be established by the prosecutor, there's twenty-one counties. I had a talk with the Attorney General's Office, and I suggested, and they thought it was sound advice, that the AG develop this training and make it consistent for all twenty-one counties, rather than twenty-one different training policies down there.
But is that in place? I guess that's my, my, my question. I, I just, I know, I feel like we're racing ahead, and, um, you know, I have the, the union people, union delegates have been informed and are aware of this. It just seems like, I don't know, I don't, I, I want it to be thought out or fleshed out, and to have guidelines. It just sounds like.
There are absolutely guidelines. We, our ordinance says, written mirrors what the Attorney General's guideline dictates. We can't go outside of that. That's why there is no subpoena powers, it doesn't allow for it, things like that. Now, legislation could change, the, the state could come out with a legislation allowing for investigations. There's different types of civilian complaint review boards all over the country. Our, ours is a review. That's all that's allowed in New Jersey right now. There's this Supreme Case Court in New Jersey with the Newark Police. The Newark unions challenged it because they were going to have subpoena power, and the Newark police unions won that, and they can't do that. Again, legislation could do what the legislation's going to do. Right now, we're operating, you know, our, our proposed ordinance is definitely without question within the four corners of the Attorney General's guideline.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Castellino, I thought I, I, you had a question.
Yeah, yeah, well, Councilwoman had, took one of my questions, which was in regards to the training. Chief and I had a few conversations the other day. My other question for you, Council President, like other commissions that we, that we have to have appointments for, I assume, or I'm going to request that we, from the candidates, a resume, as we do with our other commissions. I think it's important to see the person who volunteers their time, which we will appreciate. I would also like to see their experiences as well.
I, yeah, I agree with you, because we do ask for those resumes for all other committees. I want to defer to the chief, and because I'm not familiar with the guidelines, if there is any, any guidelines with respect to how the council consensus, well, it's not a council consensus, we have several members that the council has to appoint. Are there any guidelines with respect to how we appoint them, Chief?
So the guideline doesn't per se establish how a municipality appoints. So many different forms of government, and that's up to the, in, in our case with the Faulkner Plan, that's up to the council to decide what the board is going to consist of. So the, the proposed ordinance allows for certain appointments by the mayor, certain appointments by the collective body of the council. You know, they, they wouldn't be and shouldn't be appointed by me, or police officers, or anything like that. There's, it's a complaint review board, not a police complaint review board. So, you know, whatever, whatever rules you determine on top of that, that, that's entirely up to the.
Okay, thank you. And just for, for the, I know, Chief, you sent us an email letting us know what the categories of the persons that would be considered inherently conflicted?
Right, now, that, that's just cut and pasted directly from the Attorney General's guideline.
Okay, and, and so among those, and I know that I've had some conversations with some of my council colleagues, those who may not serve, I don't know if our, if everyone had a moment to review who may not serve, but for those, for the benefit of those in the public, those who may not serve because they, they have an inherent conflict, or a sworn police officer or employee of a law enforcement agency within the board's jurisdiction, or any person who has held such a position in the last five years, a sworn officer or employee of any other state, county, or local law enforcement agency, a prosecutor or criminal defense attorney currently practicing in the county within the board's jurisdiction, a relative of any aforementioned individuals as defined in the New Jersey Conflicts Interest Law, NJSA fifty-two, colon, thirteen, D dash twenty-one, dot, two, two D, a current candidate for public office, or with respect to the board's membership, a current officer or employee of the municipality. Those are the list, as the chief just said, from the AG's directives, that would present an inherent conflict and could not serve on the review board. But to your point, your question, Councilwoman Castellino, it has been. Oh, go ahead.
You could impose on yourselves a super majority, that anybody appointed to the board requires a super majority. Was Ken or Richard say otherwise? I think you can do that.
Okay.
But certainly something for, for, for us to discuss, council colleagues. Let's think about how we want to move forward, and, you know, consider the council majority as well. But I agree, you know, we do ask for resumes for other positions that we appoint, so Councilwoman Castellino, I would be supportive of that as well. We, we want to know who we're appointing.
Sorry, Council President, I would add, the guidelines that the chief, that you just read, that we were emailed by the chief, be submitted also with those resumes, so that we know candidates come forward, we are looking at that as well, and asking those same questions.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point. There is a duty to disclose, and that should be made known as well, in any, you know, space, but, good points. Thank you.
Is, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Is there going to be an opportunity for us to discuss the guidelines that we would like to see before the, the board is formed?
I, I think that, yes, we absolutely should. So whether it's before second reading, although I'm not sure if we're ready to appoint as soon as the ordinance is in effect, but I think that we can start meeting, you know, in pairs, and then come together with our consensus, is, is what we have, have thought about. You know, obviously not being restrictive, but yeah, certainly coming together to talk about ideas.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to request that we do that, so that we, we do have a consensus on how we would like it to unfold.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council President, are we saying this will come up for second reading by September fourteenth? If that's the case, we have a lot of work to do between now and then.
Yes, we do have a lot of, we, we've got a ton of work to do in addition to this, but yes, to your point. So I'm going to, you know, ask that we each, you know, contemplate what, you know, and, and take a look at what other, you know, our neighbors in South Orange, Maplewood have, they've had an existing review board, and we may reach out to them as well, to look at how and what their criteria are in process. And I'm, I'm going to ask that we each come up with some suggestions, and then, you know, we'll meet in pairs, because we don't have enough time considering, you know, the next meeting to have a special workshop on this. So I'm going to ask that we. So I'm going to ask that we each do some homework and, and, um, let's partner up and, and then come together.
Question?
Yes, Councilwoman.
This for the chief. Chief, what other towns other than South Orange, Maplewood have this board?
So to my knowledge, and I'm not an expert on South Orange or Maplewood, but this is relatively new, this Attorney General's guideline that allows for this. I don't believe in either instance that the review boards in Maplewood and South Orange look at actual complete investigation. The members of this board are going to see internal confidential documents. Prior to this authorization, those things could not be released to those boards. So I think they look more at, um, a, a generic, uh, operation of the police department. There are different forms of government. It's, it's not a, really a civilian complaint review board per se. I don't, I forget what they call it in South Orange. I, I've heard, uh, former chief speak about it and had to appear and speak to them about concerns. It's more of a, like a, a, a board that looks at community concerns and talks about, uh, issues that are, you know, in front of the horizon, whatever. This is completely different. This is the board actually looking at a finished product. They, they, they'll look at each complaint we receive. I, I'm thinking quarterly, that can change, but, um, I think it would be, it would be monthly because we don't get that many complaints. So they'll look at quarterly, the completed investigation. They'll be able to look at body cam footage. They'll be able to look at reports from internal affairs, interviews, so on and so forth, witness interviews. And at the end of that, they, they write a report to the mayor and to myself indicating that hopefully they think we did a good job. If not, they can say, we don't think you investigated this thoroughly. We recommend it's reopened. Again, that, it doesn't have the force of law. They can't compel me to reopen it, but they can request that. They, they can make recommendations, basically.
So, so again, the only other town you know of doing this right now that we can contact is South Orange, Maplewood?
No, they're not doing this. That's what I'm saying. They may, they may do it. They're not doing it yet because it's not, it's, it's not, it's not allowed yet because the training hasn't been put out by the prosecutor. So they have.
Councilwoman McCartney's point, why are we rushing along if, if hasn't, the guidelines haven't been put out yet? It's like the conversation I had about the state, the last meeting with the cannabis ordinance that, you know, that the, the state doesn't put out the guidelines. And, um, you know, we're, 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 you know, we're putting out, you know, we're trying to create our, our legislation. So it just kind of makes me nervous.
What I would say is that this board cannot operate till the training is promulgated. So even if we, even if you pass this tonight and we, um, or I don't want to say wait because it's not me. You select board members, the mayor selects his board members and everything's established. Nobody can do anything until the training's promulgated, but that's training from the Attorney General's office. It's not legislation. So once that happens, then they could go, it could go into effect. If you choose to wait and wait till the training is promulgated, then you're going to have to introduce it, have two readings and everything else and it'll be beyond that. But that, that's a, that's a council decision. That's not my decision.
Well, so, so I guess my question is if, like, what is the, like, what are we waiting for? So we're waiting for the guidelines from the Attorney General.
We have that.
So we.
We have that.
And the training?
The only thing we're waiting for from, is from the Essex County Prosecutor is for a training curriculum for the members of the board. So this board will not operate until that training takes place.
Okay, but what about the guidelines?
The guidelines, that, that what I, what I cut and pasted, um, and sent you today was, was the pertinent part about who goes on the board. Their, their public document, they're written on the internet or I can, it's, it's, it's pretty voluminous and it's not all about, um, it's the complete directive on internal affairs that this, that encompasses the CCRB. It's not like there's one directive on a CCRB. So it's pretty voluminous, but I'd be happy to send it to you.
Yes, please.
So I, I just, I, I know I said South Orange, Maplewood, but what Maplewood has, and they themselves say, I, I've met with them, um, for years now, what they have is a community board on police. So it is different, um, because they're, you know, they're, it, it, it's different because the powers that the Attorney General guidelines would now give civilian review boards, did not exist when they formed their, um, community board on police. But the guidelines, as, as the chief said, are in existence, just the training is not. And I, I agree when the chief, um, proactively moved forward to create the, um, ordinance for the civilian review board is, we know that it's coming. Let's have our ducks in a row and make sure we have a, um, procedure and ordinance in place so that we're not, you know, waiting till the last minute to do it. So as the chief said, and I just want to reiterate, um, that there is, nothing can happen until the, um, the trainings, I don't want to say the guidelines, until the training is available and that is not yet available. But the guidelines are certainly available and it would take some time for, you know, even us to get, um, ourselves together to figure out, you know, what are we going to be looking for in candidates that we as a council appoint and member? So it's the start, but, um, certainly not a jumping off point right now because we don't have the training available for us. I'm sorry, are, uh, are you done, uh, Councilwoman?
Yeah, yes, Council President. I see my colleagues hand up.
Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Just through the, uh, question about, you know, why are we, why are we rushing? I don't know that we're rushing and I wouldn't say that we're rushing and I'm not trying to disparage anybody. I just want to have a robust conversation about this. I think it's important that we listen to the voices of the community. We've seen over the last year and a half, uh, national outcry with regard to Black Lives Matter as well as in West Orange. And a key part of Black Lives Matter and a part that has been misunderstood almost universally is that Black Lives Matter is not anti-police. It is actually pro-good police and having a robust, uh, civilian complaint review board or civilian review board, uh, for police is a part of that. What that outcry is meant to, uh, communicate, uh, to those that are in leadership positions is that we want a mechanism for holding police accountable when they cross the line. Almost everyone will agree that the overwhelming majority of police officers do their job well, day in and day out. Most of them spend their entire career without having a single shot fired from their, from their service revolver. So it is not about being anti-police. It is not about trying to, uh, put shackles on the police or keep them from being able to do their job. It's about providing a mechanism that allows for the community to feel assured that if police over, overstep their bounds, there's a way to hold them accountable. Uh, I think the chief said it very well. This is really, this, especially this particular ordinance and how it's, how it's, uh, uh, spelled out, 2654 dash 21. It is really a review of him and how he's making sure that the police, uh, are doing their job properly and when they don't, that the proper response, uh, is given. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of it and I think we should move, move right ahead. And I thank you for indulging me with the time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, councilman. And thank you, Chief, and to my colleagues for your questions, um, and look forward to the continued collaboration on moving forward. Um, and I'll email you just the link, um, because on the, uh, Maplewood, um, page, their community board on police, they have a website on their, on their township web, uh, webpage. And all of the names of the members are on there. So it might be a good idea just to have conversations.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Madam President?
Ordinance 2655 dash 21 and ordinance amending chapter two, section 15.3 of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange Department of Fire Composition. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Don't move. Second.
I'm sorry, who did the first? I didn't.
Councilwoman Williams.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matusuk Brown?
Yes.
2656 dash 21 and ordinance adopting Fourth Amendment downtown redevelopment plan. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matusuk Brown?
Yes, and I see my council colleague, Councilwoman Castellino has, uh, hand up.
Yes, thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
My colleague could indulge me. On page seven of this ordinance, uh, I tried to get hold of Mr. Greigle today, but he is out on vacation. So, um, again, the last meeting, we had approved the, uh, licensed cannabis, uh, ordinance. And we did have some conversations of where, you know, it would go and there'd be a committee and all that. So I think Mr. Greigle might have just put this in. But I'm going to ask to make them, I'm, well, I'm going to make a motion for amendment because of where this is located and it's close proximity to Washington School, the Community House, the PAL. I just don't think this would be a preferred location for this activity, uh, this business, these businesses. So I would like to remove the language, uh, on the bottom of page seven, going to, uh, page eight. And, um, if we could, uh, if I could have a second, um, and my colleagues could be supportive of removing it from, from this area of the downtown.
Good week. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Councilwoman.
Can we discuss that, uh, just before we get to a motion? Because, um, I, I think I, I, can we discuss that?
There's a motion on the floor though, right now, so.
There's no second on the motion.
I thought Councilwoman McCartney did.
I was ready to, but I'm open for a discussion.
Okay, great.
Conversation when we, uh, discussed it. Yes.
We can discuss, yes.
So I think it's, if, I think what Councilwoman Castellino was getting at, there, there is no language in this, um, section that discusses how far a dispensary or, uh, medical cannabis, a retailer or dispensary needs to be from churches, schools, after school programs, daycare. On, on one side of this, um, area, it is very close to Washington School, Community House, PAL, as Councilwoman Castellino has already, uh, said. On the diagonally opposite side, it is not. And so if, if we look at the, if we look at the language here, it would allow for these businesses to be in what I consider too close proximity to those types of places. But there are places in the zone that are not too close to those types of places. So I, I don't know how we parse that, but I do think language needs to be in there to protect, um, schools, churches, uh, after school programs and daycare centers.
So I think that that language, um, and, and I don't know, uh, Mr. Tranker, Mr., um, Kizer, if, that, that language, I think, has to be amended in, in a zoning. Right, because I, I don't know.
This would be the, this would, um, after it goes to the planning board, would come back to you on second reading. So we can, it certainly can be, uh, revised to add the language, uh, to put some type of, um, a distance. And now it could be adopted on first reading and we could, you could request the planning board to address that issue specifically so that when they report back, they address it. So again, anything you do tonight, we'll go to the planning board and we'll come back to you on second and final reading. So it's really just a question of how you want to present it to them, uh, for their consideration. And obviously, Mr. Greigle will be back from vacation and we can get him to fine tune it. I know he, he's worked on this, uh, with Mr. Beckelman and others with regard to having the flexibility. So it's up to you. If you have a specific, uh, request as to the distance, um, we could obviously amend it right now. If you just want to send it to the planning board tonight and say that they should examine that issue and they should, uh, make a recommendation as to the distance, subject to your final approval, that's also acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Councilwoman Williams, your hand is up.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a question for consideration. If we put in language saying that it could not be within a specific distance to churches, schools, after care programs, et cetera, and this facility is approved, then that also means that those facilities wouldn't be able to open post this facility. So I understand that we want to protect, um, you know, some of our businesses or, 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 our, our schools, our children, et cetera. But I, I just think we need to be careful about it being entirely too restrictive because we're a town of small businesses and we don't want to impact future businesses from, from coming into our town because of this ordinance. I think it, it, it is good for us to remember that these businesses do not have any indication by law, you can't tell that it is a cannabis facility. It has to be completely discreet. So we just need to be mindful that it's not going to wreak a cannabis retail facility.
I, to, to your point, Councilwoman, um, Williams, um, that, that is a good, um, thought, uh, with a thought process with respect to if we limit it in this ordinance, are we limiting it in other, um, places? But I think this would be specific and that's, that's always good to keep in mind, but this is very, very specific to, uh, the redevelopment zone, right? I know, and, and this is just, um, I spoke to the mayor earlier, obviously should, um, you know, our conversations, um, some of the, uh, council colleagues' conversations with the mayor, um, his perspective was that, um, you know, that, that we might not have one, and he keeps going back to that. We might not have anyone with a license, you know, they're not issued licenses from the state. So, um, but I, I would be most comfortable sending this to the planning board because I don't know what 250 feet is, 500 feet is, 1,000 feet is. I, I, I would ask that we defer to the planning board, um, to, to look at that and, and decide what like, what those limitations are.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
That being something that we try to identify. I just.
Yeah, I don't know what that would be.
So I wasn't suggesting that we determine 1,000 feet, 500 feet, and I do support sending to the planning board. But whatever the planning board comes up with, I think it should be consistent, not just in this zone, but in town. We want to protect schools, we want to protect churches and after care programs from being around too close to these types of businesses. And it, whether we get any or not, that's debatable. We don't know yet, but if we do, we certainly don't want them across the street from a school. Our residents have already spoken to that. That's, that's, even though it's clear that we want it by, by the vote, we want it in West Orange, we don't want it just anywhere and we don't want just anyone to walk by and be, um, you know, whatever. So I think, I think the residents have been very clear on that part.
I, I have to disagree with you, Councilman, um, with respect to how many residents have been very clear on that. The emails that I've received don't really speak to this space. There have been some, um, that have spoken to that. And I also just want to go back and, and, and circle back and talk about when we're, when we're speaking about cannabis, marijuana, and, and always with the, the, my focus, with the focus on, on social justice and equity, when we talk about protecting our kids from, from being, from, from a dispensary that is, A, not, um, distinguishable whatsoever. Our kids, first of all, are not going to be able to go in and buy an ounce for $345. It's expensive. It's not something that is, is going to be available to them. I, my, my challenge is that when I hear us talk about cannabis and marijuana in terms of protecting our children, I'm sure that our children can tell us exactly where it is that they. I'm sure that our children can tell us exactly where it is that they can cop from or their friends cop from. That's the reality. But I'm really uncomfortable when I hear that language. And the state has not provided those guidelines.
Points. Before we go, I don't want to forget, you just made two points I'd like to respond to.
Go ahead.
So first, everyone that has spoken to me personally about where these types of businesses should be has spoken about making sure we protect churches, schools, after-care programs.
Me too, me too, Councilman.
So that's first. But second, if our children can tell us where to cop, put that in quotes, as you just mentioned, they will know that this is a dispenser. So just because it doesn't have the signage, and just because it doesn't have a neon sign saying buy marijuana here, doesn't mean that the children won't know where it is. And, and look, I've been pro-recreational marijuana from the beginning. I've said it in church, I've said it in council meetings, I've said it in one-on-ones and in group meetings. I fully support it. I think we need to be diligent about where we allow these businesses to open because the residents have asked us to exercise, or let me rephrase that. The residents I've spoken with have asked me to be diligent about where we place these businesses in town to minimize both the perceived impact and the real impact. Thank you.
And I appreciate that. You know, when I said residents, for me, I can only express what the conversations that I've had. Now, when we look at what the perceived danger or impact is on students when there are liquor stores or liquor stores by churches and schools, you can't walk across the street from a school without seeing a church right next to a liquor store as it presently exists. Does that mean that our students are walking into the liquor store that's next to the church after they're leaving church? I'm not trying to, to counter your argument. I'm just saying, we already have that existing in town. I don't see it as a detriment to those students when they're coming out of church and there's a liquor store right next door, or the community has a liquor store right across the street from where they are. They exist. And whether or not they know that it is a dispensary that cannabis or marijuana is sold there, they are not going to be the ones who can A, walk in there because they don't have the age, or be afforded. And I understand the concern of there being transient people with, also that have issues, that have addictions. But again, even looking at a website for any of these dispensaries, it is clearly, it's pretty unaffordable. I don't think, I don't see a situation where someone will go into a dispensary and say, hey, can you, you know, not like when we were growing up and there was the corner store that you could buy a loose cigarette from for $0.25. That's not happening at a dispensary. It's just far too unaffordable, in my opinion. But I do, I do agree, and I wasn't saying, Councilman Rutherford, that you said that you needed, we needed to set the guidelines of 100 feet or fight that. What I said was to Mr. Trank's point, that we can ask them, the planning board, to set those guidelines. And I don't know what they are. So I'm more comfortable saying to the planning board, you know, they do this, or the zoning board, well, the planning board in this case, let them tell us, you know, what those parameters are because they will have the same discussion with respect to if we limit it here or we limit it everywhere. Right? And that's ultimately going to be their role to tell us they kind of can.
I completely agree. That's the proper place to make that decision with the planning board. My comment in that regard was not directed at you, Council President. That was directed at Councilwoman Williams. I'm not saying that we should tonight. I didn't imply that. And so that is the proper place in the planning board. But to the point about liquor stores, you know, I do have a problem with liquor stores being next to schools or churches or after-care programs. I have a problem with that, too, and I think that is an even bigger problem than cannabis. In fact, alcohol is the only drug that I'm aware of, that if you are really addicted, you'll need a doctor to detox, otherwise you will die. So we have a real problem with alcohol, too. That just wasn't the subject of this conversation. But I am not in support of alcohol of any liquor stores being next to schools, churches, or after-care programs. And I think if we can get rid of that, if there's any way to get rid of that, I'd love to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I still see your hand up, Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate all my colleagues' comments and their passion. So the state statue is 200 feet from a liquor store for school. And I think that is too close for this facility. So my phone rang off the hook after we passed this last month. And a lot of, and again, no one calls in, it's summer, and no one's paying attention, and it gets frustrating. So, you know, parents, you know, parents are nervous about it. And, you know, I, we try, you know, again, I'm not a supporter of it. I wanted to pass an ordinance to ban it from the township. Main reason is because of enforcement and headaches that could present itself in regards to the vapes that are the e-cigarettes that when I first came on council, another issue in town with them. Wish I didn't move forward with that ordinance. So I think we should be mindful where we place these facilities. We do have problems with liquor stores where we have, not maybe the kids per se, but we do have individuals with certain issues that ask people to buy them, ask to borrow money. These facilities are beautiful. I've seen them. I've talked to a few owners when I was council president. I was, you know, people approached me last year. Wonderful business people. I get all that. But at the same time, we can be mindful, the people who are utilizing these are going there for a reason. And whether we have it in the middle main street or in an office building, which I thought we were going to target, they're still going to make their money and their profit. They're not going to make a bigger profit by being on Main Street. But I think we do need to be mindful. So the planning board is the appropriate place. We're not going to go out with our tape measure. Mr. Luke Horwell, actually. And yeah, so I appreciate if we could, you know, whatever we need to do at this point. I would prefer to move the language this evening, but if they want to get a pair of eyes on it, that's all I'm asking. But I prefer the language to be taken out because this is specific to Main Street Sub-District, which is right along Main Street, right next to the community house, wrapping around, right on Torrey Corner. Don't feel it's appropriate in that particular spot.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Did I see your hand go up, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, just procedurally, are we amending the language in the draft on first reading? Or are we referring this to the planning board?
You should refer to the planning board.
We do have a motion on the floor, so unless we get a second.
We don't have a motion. We just, we didn't second the motion, correct?
There was a motion, but I did, we never got to, I never got to ask for a second.
So then it just dies.
Right, if nobody seconds it.
I tried.
What I was going to say before is add language, the recommendation to the planning board, this is strictly for the redevelopment zone. This is not townwide. This is strictly for that area in redevelopment. That we make recommendation to the planning board to concentrate, pay close attention to this cannabis section that's in here, and look at all the guidelines that Councilwoman Castellino is concerned about.
Well, I think it's inherent. Obviously, you as the council liaison will make sure it's front and center. Yeah, so I'm confident that the planning board will bring back, and again, we can have Mr. Greigle come to the next meeting of the council, and whatever comes out of the planning board, he can try to articulate the rationale.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with them doing it.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, Ordinance 2657-21, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
We actually have an executive session. But I wanted us to get through the agenda so that we don't have anyone, you know, waiting for us to come back, and there's really no other business to discuss, so.
President?
Yes.
Just under new business, I wanted to bring to my council colleagues' attention that our next meeting is scheduled for September 4th, which is Yom Kippur.
The 4th?
September 14th, which is Yom Kippur. I'm sorry if it didn't come through clearly. September 14th is a Jewish holiday. So I just wanted to make sure we're aware that that might be a challenge for many of our residents, our community.
Yeah, how do we do that? Didn't we see that?
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but Yom Kippur starts the evening of the September the 15th.
But that is day?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I was going to say, I know Madam Clerk goes through the calendar, look at the.
And I also talked to Shari Quirk because she does observe those holidays, the Jewish holidays. So I make sure that I review it with her every year.
Okay. Thank you.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
I'm not off of work, and I work for the Orthodox.
Okay, so if we, Madam Clerk, if we don't have any other further business, a new business to discuss, then do we have to go into executive session and then come back and adjourn, or can we adjourn in executive session?
I would defer to the legal.
We can, again, we can adjourn executive session because there'll be no further votes taken on anything that we discussed in executive session tonight.
Okay, so we will, just for the public's information, we are, we will be adjourning in executive session, so we will not be returning to this forum, as we will not take any actions in executive session or have any actions to take here.
I just want to clarify, so I am ending the meeting when you adjourn here, and then you are doing your thing and not coming back. Just want to, okay.
Correct.
Save the Beatles music.
No, not Beatles music. We will not. We will not be returning. Mr. Trank, you'll email us the information for executive session?
Yes, I will.
Wonderful. All right, West Orange, thank you so much. For those of you who are still with us, to my council colleagues, always a pleasure to have robust discussions with you. Really enjoy the process. And to the administration and to our staff, thank you, Chief, thank you, Madam Clerk, and to our Madam Moderator, and of course, Mr. Kizer, for all of the work. I know that this was a jam-packed agenda, but we will have lighter agendas moving into two meetings a month, starting next month. So everyone, have a good night. We need a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
We're insane with like stereotipo.
Yeah, right? Good night, West Orange.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Night.
Thank you, everyone. So this deform me that when I end this meeting, it will be ending for those on and off screen. No other fitness will be conducted here while they go into executive session. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thanks, Lauren.